All right, I think we can get going on our budget discussion. I just wanted to make a real brief announcement that Director O'Lockman has to leave at about 10:00 this morning for a work commitment. Denise, you want to kick it off?
I will, thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And welcome, people who are just joining us. I just wanted to start our discussion about our budget adjustments this morning with a few comments. And after our legislators and our students and folks shared their thoughts this morning, I think it's even more crucial than ever to talk about this. All of you know that your decisions as the school board are never easy. In a climate where we just talked about where school funding is always, we're always reacting from the scarcity model, it's a challenge. And you, as school board members, are tasked with trying to figure out when's the appropriate time to ask for increases in revenue from your community, when are the appropriate times to make adjustments so that we can manage what's going on. And I think Paul Lee and staff did a great job talking about the increasing demands. And I was glad that Bob recapped the comment from Representative Jurgens because I think for much of our community, it does seem like, well, we're asking for money, asking for money, but what's changing? And it's a real challenge to help people understand the whole school funding piece, right? I mean, it's not something that people are particularly usually that engaged in unless they have to be or for some reason they have an interest in it, or, you know, those kind of things. So, that being said, I just want to try to connect the dots for where you are and kind of our timeline that we've been talking about. If we go back to our, you know, the discussion really for us as your administrative team was back in June of 2017. We go back to the closed session when we had the conversation about negotiation and parameters for all contracts. And after that conversation, we felt that there was a need for the board to have more information on school funding and how that works. Because it is complex. It's not super easy and there are lots of rules to it. So, after we worked on those contracts and we got most of those contracts settled by early fall, then we came forward and we planned finance sessions together. And those are your board finance sessions. You know, Mary Saconi said, and on some of those, we did those together. We had no less than seven separate finance discussions, also, you know, combined with other work sessions you had in your school board meetings and all those kind of things. And at those sessions, the intent is to really help people understand that, excuse me, you've got the big general fund pot that you can pour into your other pots, but you can't go backwards. And that's still really hard for people to understand because they hear us talk about, you know, capital funds and construction funds and all of those. But I think if you go back to that image where we have the big pot of the general fund and then the rest, it makes it a little bit easier for folks. We shared timelines with you to help you understand kind of the life cycle of every two years what that budget looks like. And many of you who have been around the table for a while know that when the legislature makes their decision about what the school funding is going to be, that kind of gives us our next kind of two years of maybe fresh money or what we can count on. What people don't always recognize is that as a school district, a lot of the things that we need to do contractually, we have to do before we understand what the legislature is able to give us. So, you know, letting our probationary teachers go if we don't think we're going to have enough money or have the programming, all of those staffing things need to happen by April. And so, that's hard for people to think, well, why are you going to cut these programs? And we might be giving more money or we might not. I think after we heard Chris and Brad share a little bit today, it's always this dance between now and June, trying to figure out where people can land. I mean, our legislators, our representatives, shared with us that education is very important, but they also shared that we have health and human services and we have transportation. And, you know, there's a lot of people around the pond wanting those resources. One of the questions after was, after about a year ago, was, you know, when do we get to talk about priorities? Well, your priorities really come with how you budget. For programings and things that are important to you, that's where you put your money. And so, this is where you've had lots of discussions and I think where you came last week was, we had a long discussion about ALC. And from my perspective, there was a desire from the board to keep our ALC program. We didn't make any decision, but that was kind of what I heard around the table. So, that's one of your priorities. That's, you know, a priority that you're going to keep here. And even though that program costs more for us than we bring in, that's something that you want to keep. So, this conversation about priorities will continue for you as you figure out what you want to do moving forward. I do want to comment on one thing and ask you to be, maybe reflect a little bit and be thoughtful. I'm hearing often about, we want to keep this away from the kids. And I understand what you mean by that because you really want to try and make cuts throughout the system before it impacts kids. But what I'm asking you to caution on is, the message that I have given to all of our staff is every one of them counts to try and make this a good experience for our kids. So, it doesn't matter if you're the transportation person who's making sure our kids get to school safely and doing that routing. It doesn't matter if you're cutting the check to try to pay folks, if you're the nurse in the office trying to take care of kids. No matter what your position is, you are taking care of kids. We know that teachers are the direct contact, but everyone is dedicated to taking care of the kids. So, I just want you to be thoughtful about keeping it away from the kids because every person here impacts the kids in some way or is really wanting to be part of what we think's important for kids for education. You have four options. So, you have choices, which is good. The first, you can do nothing and you can use your fund balance to help pay for the costs that we've incurred over the last couple of years. And that is a choice that you have because we're fortunate that we do have a fund balance that we could use for that. You have a second choice about making some adjustments and looking at those list of options and saying, okay, here's things that we think that we're comfortable doing to reduce what that might be going forward, hoping that we get, you know, continued funding and it won't have as much as an impact. You can make enough budget adjustments so that your revenue and your expenditures are equal and you're back kind of on solid ground from there. Or you can go even further and make adjustments until you restore your fund balance policy. I think what everybody's learned as far as going through these first sessions where we've had conversations about this, is it's really hard when you start looking at making budget cuts to programs and kids and things happening in our schools currently because most of them are there because they help serve kids and families. So, always those competing things that you have as a board about where we're going to ask for revenue, where we're going to ask people to pay for services and where we aren't. And I wish we had more flexibility with that. We just don't. And I don't see us having a lot of flexibility going forward, so we have to be careful with how we do that. I wanted to comment just a little bit on the budget surplus, and I don't have to do a lot of that. And I would ask that Mike and Sarah and Paula, if you want to chime in for this also, they all attended the AMSD pre-session with our students last Friday. And it was interesting to hear Scott Kruenquist talk about the $1.5 billion surplus because I think we were all excited when we saw that. Certainly, that's way better than being deficit, right? What he had shared is, after this whole notion of some of those set-asides, you're maybe looking at about, I put 850, I think, I might be close on there. Chris had said maybe about half. And then, what they had shared is that if we look at three-on-three for the formula, which is meaning 3% increase one year, 3% the next, that would be about 550. But what she also shared is that that's one-time money, which is a little bit more, you know, that doesn't really work so well if you're using that for contractual things where you have the cost over and over. And then again, they talked about 121 million going towards maybe cross-subsidy. All of those things will help us if that happens, so that's hopeful. I mean, if we could get a couple of million, if we could get a couple of million with a special ed cross-subsidy, we wouldn't have to have this conversation today, right? So, we're hopeful about that. And I really appreciate all of you being here today and having those conversations. I feel like our representatives are very open to having us come. I know Mike will, whatever it looks like for our next group, but Mike currently as legislative chair will keep us up to date on what's happening down there. We'll bring parents, we'll bring kids, we'll offer to testify and, as our teachers did today, really share their stories. And I think that those stories really do help so much. So, possibly, you know, even having a couple of sessions where they could come and visit our special educators so they could see in action. Because when you, many of you have, you've been in the classrooms for our special education teachers or your teachers who have taught with them, you know that what they're facing is really difficult. And, you know, even as a district, we've tried to help with the paperwork. If you remember, we put in those due process pairs, which we're going to talk about actually today. Those due processes pairs help with that paperwork, but it's still, it's the stress of trying to make sure that every T is crossed and I is dotted and box is checked. And with that, on top of what happened is in the classroom is difficult for them. Anyway, so we have those choices to make. We have the budget. It's good news that it's a surplus, not a deficit, excuse me. So, hopefully that'll be helpful going forward, but it doesn't do a whole lot for where we are really right now. So, the other piece I wanted to mention before we go forward, and we're going to share information, you've asked for information on administration, instructional coaches, all of those things that you've asked. We've tried to combine to give you the information that you need today so you can see exactly what that looks like. But remember for Stillwater that we already have 1.5% built in for our steps and lanes. So, that's a cost that you have no matter what. I mean, you know, unless you're going to do some type of a freeze or something, we automatically have 1.5% that's built into our budget. So, that leaves you about a half a percent if you're, you know, I would say that I think we could be probably pretty comfortable hoping that we'll get a 2% increase each year. But remember again, that's that one-time money. So, how does that look? That's going to impact us. But what that leaves you with is about $500,000. And when you look at our organization, we, like hospitals and other places, we're people-oriented, right? We have to have people, just like hospitals do, to take care of patients. We have to have teachers to take care of our kids. So, that cost, that, you know, anywhere 75 to 80-ish percent cost is our human resources cost, which is there whether we like it or not. It's something that we, you know, we need to pay folks to show up. So, those are all things I just wanted to comment on before we got started to kind of remind you as you go forward with some of these ideas that you do have choices and that's up to you and we'll continue to move forward in whatever you feel that might be. Our hope is that you have some things that you feel comfortable about for tomorrow night to be able to do a report on, on the work that you've done. If that ends up being something where here's all the things that we've looked at, but we've decided, no, we're just, we're going to use our fund balance, then I think our greater community needs to know that. So, whatever you decide today, we'll come together and take your information, your comments, whatever, and try to create something that is understandable for our community. Are there any questions about any of that or any comments that you wanted to make before we kind of dig in to share some of the information that you've asked for?
I just want to say I really appreciate you bringing that to light about the impact that all of our school community has on our students. And as you try and you and your team continue to cultivate a culture of where everyone is valued and acknowledged, I think that's a really good important reminder for us as well. So, thank you for bringing that up.
All right, well, I'm sorry.
Well, and I think part of the issue, as you framed it up, is, and I think you did that well, because on the one hand, you've got how important is the 5% fund balance? On the other side of that is, you have to make some adjustments otherwise. It's not extra that you're eliminating or frivolous. These are all something that's vital and there was a reason why they were there. So, I mean, those are the kinds of choices. It's an oversimplification, but that's what we have to decide today.
All right. Well, obviously, you can all chime in whenever you want on any of those things. But I think what we'll do first is share with you information about the instructional coaches and try, add some clarity for you around what that looks like. And so, we have some handouts.
So, my understanding was that there was some question around, just trying to get an idea of where do instructional coaches come from, what budgets are they paid out of, how many instructional coaches are paid out of what? And because that would be helpful in making a decision regarding those pieces. So, what's being passed around is a fairly simplistic document, just to hopefully answer that question. So, we currently have eight instructional coaches across the district, right? So, we've got, we've got one at the high school, we've got one at each of the middle schools, and then we have instructional coaches that are spread across the elementary schools is the way that it works. We're not yet at a level, obviously, with eight, that we have one per building. That said, the way it's currently set up, the QComp budget, part of the QComp plan as it was designed, was to provide funding to support instructional coaching. So, four of those coaches come out of the QComp, they're paid out of the QComp dollars. Three of the coaches are paid directly out of the professional development budget, and then one coach is paid out of achievement and integration. And so, that's where they get broken down. The additional note that I have in the professional development line there is that right now we also are, based on conversations that the QComp board agreed upon last year, we're putting money out of professional development to the tune of about $30,000 for the important piece, we talked about this maybe a year ago, of the mentoring program and all the stuff that goes and gets involved in that. So, that, we set that aside. The QComp board thought that that was important. That's part of what Deb Van Cley does, is helps to get that up and running because we feel that's important.
When you say it comes out of achievement and integration, what does that mean?
That means that, so the achievement and integration, if you remember just very basically how the budgets work, right? You've got the general budget and then you've got assigned budget or categorical budget, depending upon what you're talking about. Achievement and integration can only be spent on certain things, those dollars that come in. And so, that's the budget that Eric Anderson and George Nolan oversee. And so, one of the, one of the things that we're spending, in this case, a little over $124,000 on, is the equivalent of one instructional coach for those purposes.
So, ultimately, does that come out of money that's set aside for EMed?
That comes out of the money that we receive as part of the achievement and integration dollars that we get. So, we get the, because of our, because of our connection with other districts and our application for achievement and integration, we get that set aside to dollars. So, that goes on its own.
Okay. And I'm going to trace it back just a step further because I'm always either/or and how that goes. So, is that money then that EMed gets from the state for achievement and integration? And then they distribute it or award it to local districts?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with EMed. So, to be able to have the integration funding, we have to have a partnership with somebody else. So, EMed helps with those partnerships, but that isn't part of the, we could partner with South Washington, we could do a number of things where, you know, we have a number of choices for that. But you have to have a plan put together that's approved by the state. So, once you get that chunk of money, it's in one of those buckets that we can't spend with, for other things. And I would have to say, at least from my perspective, it's probably one of the most restrictive budgets because it's really, when the legislators put that money aside, it was really wanting to focus on things that are working to help support our students who, you know.
So, what you're saying, I think, is it comes from MDE or whatever. It's awarded that way, the state, okay. And what does this coach do particularly in order to promote achievement and integration? Because I'm sure you've got to write some kind of rationale justification somewhere.
So, it's really more broad spectrum than that of the instructional coaching altogether. For purposes of accounting, if Kristen correct me if I'm wrong, we have to assign particular dollar amounts, but the amount of work we're doing with intercultural coaching, the training we're putting all of our instructional coaches through, all of the work that we do with Terry and Bonnie, with the communication, with Sharaki Holly, with the training that all of those coaches are getting as a whole, is really what is the achievement and integration piece of that. So, you could actually probably say that a portion of each coach could be set aside for the achievement and integration part of it to qualify them.
So, can I just ask to clarify? So, this is showing that the portion of our instructional coaches that comes from achievement and integration funds is $124,000.
Correct.
So, $600,000. And that $124,000 is being spread across multiple events, activities, and people for the cultural training, cultural sensitivity training?
I would say the easiest way to look at it is assume that all of our instructional coaches are doing that component. We just code off one to it. So, if you have a building, they all have it, but we know that the grant allows, I mean, it's more efficient to have one in each building doing a piece of that. They just, we don't take 10% of each one and assign it to a code. We just take one and assign it. So, we don't have one individual coach running to all of the buildings. It's just a piece of their job and we assign one person to it. It's a code thing as opposed to an.
Okay. So, then it's a little bit misleading to say we have a number of coaches, it's eight. Because that's not really.
No.
There's not how many we have, but I think.
So, I would just put it this way. This gets back to what Denise started with. This is, if we're going to get into the accounting of that piece of it, it's very complicated on how it works and we have to find ways to attach dollars to people because we have people. The question being, if I take Mike's question, the question is, why we meet the requirements of achievement and integration is because we can say, we are training all of our coaches in how to do cultural responsiveness. So, from a programmatic, we can say, it's not just one coach that gets it, it's all of them. Now, from an HR accounting side, so to your question, we have to assign a body or portions of a body to this dollar amount that gets paid, which then, the only way you break it down is how you see it here. And so, that's how it works when you have categorical.
But I think the discussion helps us understand that it's not a person, that it's a portion of lots of people.
It's the equivalent of.
Okay. That's what I was, I didn't say it for clearly.
No, I was just trying to figure out, yeah.
Okay.
Well, right, the best way to, so maybe it's 1.125 of each of their jobs.
Yep.
Is that, you just have to assign.
In practice, yes, that's how it works.
And I think Eric Anderson's point last night when he was talking at the world's best workforce was, I think it's the step three in that closing the gap. Part of that is the work that they're doing, that all the instructional coaches are doing across the curriculum or across all of our teachers is why achievement and integration money can be used. And I think that particular use of achievement and integration goes back to Tom Nelson because I remember when he went storming into Eric's office and said, "You will fund this, find it in achievement and integration." So, that particular one has been funded that way before you guys got here.
Could you walk through the process of what would it look like to change either QComp or achievement and integration? Because they're both approved plans, right? So, it would, it's not as easy as us just saying, we're going to cut it, right? It has to go back to the QComp board or.
What might be helpful, I think maybe, what might be helpful for, so we can certainly do that. And you can, we could do that now, we could do it later. But what might be helpful is just to remind you on that green sheet that you have that has all the list of the options, which Shelley has there right on top. And I think it's Bob, I don't mean to steal your thunder with this, I think he was going to get to this. But for what we have happening in the district right now, between with professional learning and professional development, on one of those top, I think it is the top one, we've listed professional development and curriculum and instruction. And that if you choose to adjust or use that as one of your budget adjustments, you'll get about $500,000 for that. If you don't want to do that and you'd rather do the instructional coaches piece, you can see that if you go down to, we put in the exact amount for the instructional coaches, We are highly recommending that you don't do both. Because if you do choose to do both, that means all the things that we've been working on in our, around student programming with responsive classroom, literacy, culturally competent, competence training, the yoga column, all of those things kind of stop dead. So, we can go into, and Shelley, we're ready to do that and talk to you about what it means. You're exactly right. QComp is something that we partner with the SCEA to develop that each year. That has to be redeveloped. From our point of view, if we wouldn't have the matching kind of coaching piece from the district, having three or four coaches district-wide is not going to be an effective coaching program. So, that might help. And then the same for integration. Integration is a plan that we submit each year. And to be frank with that, each year, the kind of specs on what you can and can't do shift a little bit. But if we didn't use it for coaching, then we'd look at something else. But the hard thing about integration is a lot of times you can't, we can't take that money and replace things. So, let's say that we, right now, we have a literacy person, Karen, right? Karen Ladder always work on literacy. We can't take that money and supplant it for something that we're already doing.
So, and I'm going to say, I know instructional coaches are valuable, we just have to find a large chunk of money. So, I'm just going to ask, if we were to eliminate all coaches, could then that $500,000 be slid into the QComp if the QComp board would approve it? Like that PD that is there right now, can you, if you eliminated that $450,000 out of the QComp budget, could you slide some PD dollars in there so that we wouldn't be eliminating that? Does that make sense?
So, I guess what I would say, first of all, we've got to back up to what, what was the premise for agreeing to doing QComp? And one of the major premises that I was told when Tom Nelson was here for getting the QComp together was that QComp would provide instructional coaching. And so, I guess the first question to answer before we even get into money shifting is, is the school board and administration in a spot where you're okay with the QComp plan, now no longer having that as one of its tenants? The purpose was to provide about half of the instructional coaching is what it was. So, that would be the first answer. The second answer with the shifting of dollars, if you come to a spot where you say, we're okay with that, then the QComp, you could have money out of QComp if you kept it the same. That would shift into whatever we wanted it to shift into. We would have to be sure that what we don't, that, we need to make sure that what we still are able to cover under the requirements for QComp is this career ladder piece. And what does that then look like? Because your instructional coaches are one piece, they're not the only piece, of the career ladder, but it is a big piece of the current plan. So, we'd have to have some conversation.
And thank you for that clarification. What I need is the next step. In other words, if QComp's purpose is instructional coaches, what's the purpose of instructional coaches? Achievement and integration, I understand now, is one significant part of that? What I'm anxious to hear is what are the other pieces? Because you're right. I mean, in terms of if you're going to eliminate it, if you're going to keep it, what's the value?
Sure. So, I guess I would back up and start this way with instructional coaches. I think to that question, we should look at instructional coaches as a whole piece, right? So, you have eight instructional coaches that make up your team regardless of what they get paid out. Because the idea with the instructional coaches is this idea of training our staff to be able to provide embedded professional development on the PV side. Meaning that, let's take responsive classroom as an example. We train up our instructional coaches at the elementary level so that as the buildings are rolling out responsive classroom, an instructional coach is able to provide help and support. On the, our TDEP, so our teacher development evaluation plan, we train up, for example, in 5D, all of our instructional coaches have been trained the same way our, for the most part, the same way our principals have been trained so that they understand our instructional framework. So, when teachers in the fall are trying to set goals for their professional growth, our instructional coaches are the ones there to help those teachers as they need, set those goals, follow up, do that type of thing.
So, in that sense, are they performing supervi- So in that sense, are they performing supervision evaluation?
They do not perform supervision evaluation.
Okay, so it's not that?
It's not that. They're along the side.
It's just instructional goals that's still left up to the administration.
Growth and development is more, you know, an example, so, so much of this is modeling, especially with responsive classroom and at the elementary level, responsive classroom, yoga column, and our literacy. You can sit down and do training for our teachers and they'll absorb, 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 like sponges as much as they can, but then we send them back in the classroom. If it doesn't happen in the classroom, then we just wasted a whole bunch of time and money on training our teachers, but it's not really happening in the classroom, which we have been guilty of in this district before, not doing this well. And so the piece where we feel that we've made big strides in the last three years is that our instructional coaches, all of these things, they get trained usually the year before. So when something starts within their building, they partner with their principal to help teachers implement that in the classroom. Because implementation is where most districts downfall is, is they do all this learn, 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 but they don't learn to apply. Because that's hard to do. It's like any of us changing your practice. If I've been an elementary teacher teaching literacy and suddenly I'm told, hey, there's new ways to do this? It's just like if I told you to go to a keto diet for, you know, in a week. How do I do that? There's so much there. So the instructional coaches partner with their principals and their teachers to make that happen until it becomes comfortable and they're actually doing that consistently with kids. So our instructional coaches, to Mike's question, have been trained in all of these new initiatives to help make sure that's happening in the classroom for kids.
Can I just interject? So I'm just watching the clock and knowing Josiah is here and he has to leave relatively soon, you know, we're, we're hearing, and I'm just going to open it up and just say it, you know, well, some teachers like it, some don't, you know, is it supported, this, that, and the other? So I guess I just want to be cognizant of the clock and kind of segue on to that, the tough topic. I just, I don't know who wants to address that or where we're going to go with that, but...
Sure, I can speak to that a little bit.
Thanks, thanks, Josiah.
This is similar to a conversation I believe Sarah and I had, and I don't remember, several weeks ago, she had some questions around coaching. And as I thought about that discussion after having it, I think the best way to describe the value of coaches, and you know, I'm going to speak personally from my lens at the high school, I worked with our coaches Andrea Schuler. What her arrival into that role and her expertise that she's developed and that all has done for me as a teacher looks like this. In the past, we've had, you know, since I've become an employee in this district in 2005, like every other district I've been a part of, we have PD days. And, you know, those PD days will be determined at a high level of administration. Some districts do a better job of this than others. This district is doing great with this of having teacher voice involved in that. There's some statutory requirements to figure out what, what is it that our instructors need? And typically, a session would be developed, either an expert would be brought in or expert teachers, members of the staff administration would present on that topic. And oftentimes it'd be in a large room and we go and have that experience. The difference today with PD, in my experience, especially over the last three years as our program has come up, and again, I'm going to speak from my perspective, is I now have a trusted colleague, and Andrea Schuler happens to be a friend of mine, so that, that's useful and helpful, I know her well, to sit down and talk about my practice. And so I can personalize PD by saying, Andrea, I want to talk to you about these different elements. I want to learn or get better at Socratic seminars. I'm, my goal is around student talk and how to get them to take more control in the classroom. What are some things we can talk about? And not only can I dialogue with her and she produces resources for me, but she can come in and model some of these things that she has expertise in. She'll come in and teach my class, for example, and I'll observe and then she'll come back and watch me make, make that attempt. And so that's just the difference. And it's maybe difficult to understand the differences of how PD has kind of evolved since that time, so. And I can answer questions.
Yeah, the question I would have is this, and I'd like your response if you would, because I remember raising this question with Tom Nelson, basically. Okay, you have to choose. And if there are eight positions or the allotment and funds here, do you choose to have eight instructional coaches or you choose to have eight additional classroom teachers that would be spread without? Now, what you're saying, I think, is the impact instructional coaches have is they make the likelihood of professional development to stick more likely.
That's been my experience.
Yeah. Given the choice, would you take the eight classroom teachers or would you take instructional coaches? Now, I think the district has taken instructional coaches.
Correct. It seems like that's been the path we've been on. And just to look back, it seems like the, the district made a commitment to having an instructional coaching model in place before we became a QComp district. And so that's impacting my, my thinking here, that that was a priority. And I think that to build a program like that, that takes time. I think that this is a question where, you know, there, there maybe isn't a, a good choice here. And, you know, as we look at it and the difficulty of making a decision around budget adjustments. I think for me, working at a secondary level, if we spread four of those eight teachers out around the secondary level, that the impact would be small. It would be an impact and any impact is a challenge at this stage of the game. But I think that as far as retaining the teachers that come here and being able to provide for them a professional development experience that is enriching to them and challenging to them, I think that that's an important piece that can't be forgotten. And I don't know, Jason, if you have an elementary perspective to add to that too. Jason Taverna, a teacher at Rutherford Elementary, for those who haven't been here.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting choice here. I think there, I think it's two different entities in a sense because, you know, I value the, the coaches that come to our, our buildings and at our building, it's Wendy Schmaltz and she's great. And she does a lot of the similar things that Josiah's experienced at the high school level. I don't know, I mean, I know that we have like ratios and everything for our, our class sizes and everything, so I don't know if switching out those coaches for teachers is going to make that big of a difference at the elementary level. I would, I mean, for me, I would rather have bodies in my room, which would be paras to help us with those kids that need it, not necessarily taking eight teachers and put them in and then all of a sudden our class sizes are reduced by maybe one or two, by the time you're done with that. So, I mean, I like the bodies.
Jason, the reason I, I put it in that sense is because what we're doing today is prioritized.
You know what? Can I interject, Mike? You've had a lot of airplay and I just, I apologize, but we need to let other people have the opportunity here. Don, did you have something that you wanted to ask?
I think I would, I would be leaning toward saving $450,000 because, because first of all, subject areas, content changes as curriculums change, and those instructional coaches, are they kept up, are they able to keep up with the new challenges the teachers have? And what is the role of administrative supervisors? The principals or assistant principals that, that evaluate teachers? I, I think it's, it's an area that's nice to have, but it's an area that I, I think I would much rather have it directed someplace else.
Could I just redirect, just a, just a quick question? So the question here about instructional coaches and what you as a board would impact in the decision in terms of reducing, is only the, the instructional coaches that are taken out of the professional development budget? The one out of achievement and integration doesn't impact your deficit? The four out of QComp doesn't impact your deficit? So it's a decision about the ones in professional development?
But that was my question before, would PD money instead of instructional coaches? And that, the only reason I asked that is because I was called by a teacher who was, who thought that was an option, and so that was my question there. Could we then save $900,000?
I think you would need to talk about efficiency versus effectiveness. One of the things, and I can, I can share this with you, it's actually one of the new school board article that came out, is if we're focusing on student achievement, one of the things that's most important for your school district is to have alignment. There was no alignment when we came, you know, we shared with you that we had, you know, four different reading curriculums going on. I think last night, for those of you that were at the World's Best Workforce, we have some work to do to be able to support our teachers in this work. But how this works now with the alignment is, we have our district goals, which are basically our World's Best Workforce and how we want to improve in reading and career and college readiness. We have those clearly defined. Our principals, with their learning teams, through learning leaders, sit down and say, okay, if these are the district goals, what does it mean for our building? Because I put DEV for developmental here because each building has something different. Jason's building is going to be different than Anderson's. Anderson's going to be different than Lake Elmo. So they look at what the school district, and let's say it's our Read Well by third grade, and they say, all right, well, how is our building doing? What do we need to do? What do we need to learn to be able to help support our students more? They decide on what those goals are and then the teachers take those and they work in their PLCs with their teams to talk about, all right, what does it mean for kindergarten? What does it mean for third grade? What does it mean for fifth grade? What does it mean for 10th grade? Because everybody has different needs, right? Once they decide what those goals are, then the teacher, this is where it has the impact on the student, because the teacher makes their QComp TDEP goal that they work on that whole year. And they might be able to do some of that learning on their own, but their, their coach helps them have this. If you don't have those instructional coaches, then you aren't having support for your teachers to do this work. These are all still things that won't be going away. If I'm here, they're not going to go away because if you don't have this, you don't, you aren't focusing on student achievement. So when you have this, if we take that away, then our teachers are, are doing it on their own and figuring out how to do it to their own. And to Don's point, we do have amazing principals who will help support that, but if I'm Rob Bach and I have 165 teachers, what does that mean? He can't do it alone.
George?
Yeah, I, I want to make a few comments since I've got the floor right. My first comment is, we vote for $500,000 to reduce PD and curriculum. We don't vote to say, keep Sharaki Holly out of the district. We don't vote to say, we don't want PD on the World's Best Workforce or PLC goals. I'm not sure why we're saying, well, we want to cut professional development. To me, that's our job to say that and then it's your job to determine how that's done. I know I disagree with some, some other board members on that who think getting into the weeds a little bit more is our job. Secondly, we heard, and I don't remember when this was presented to the board, but we got a packet on instructional coaching when we got the presentation. And they gave us seven bullet points on why we have instructional coaching. This isn't anything new for our board to, to see or to hear this. We, we've discussed coaches off and on over the years that I've been on the board since Tom Nelson was here and we started using them. I went back and looked at some old files and the most thorough study of coaching was done by the Annenberg Foundation for Education Reform. And among the, the things they said, which I don't suppose is going to be news, "Report concludes that effective coaching encourages collaborative reflective practice." Is that important, the board would have to ask? "Second finding is that effective embedded professional learning promotes positive cultural change." One would hope that we would be interested in that. Thirdly, "Coaching was linked to teachers' increased use in data to inform their practice. Effective coaching programs respond to particular needs suggested by data, allowing improvement efforts to target issues such as closing achievement gaps and advocating for equity." If we're interested in closing achievement gaps and advocating for equity, we might be interested in that. Another key finding was that coaching promotes the implementation of learning and reciprocal accountability. "The likelihood of using new learning and sharing responsibility rises when colleagues, guided by a coach, work together and hold each other accountable for improved teaching and learning." And lastly, "An essential feature of coaching is that it uses the relationships between coaches, principals, and teachers to create the conversation that leads to behavioral, pedagogical, and content knowledge, knowledge change." And as, as we've heard, if something new is coming in based on something that was presented in a Sharaki Holly workshop, what does that mean when it actually gets to the classroom then? What, what occurs once I get the information and now I get back to my classroom, I've got my 30 kids and I have to do the day-to-day stuff? What about this new initiative? Who helps me implement that? Or am I just kind of left to my own? In an article in Education Week, "Five Reasons We Need Instructional Coaches." Number one, "Coaches provide an outside perspective and can see things that we may be doing wrong or need to do better, which can help us perform at a higher level." "We need an outside perspective that can see the things we don't even know exist in the classroom about our instruction or classroom management because we're so busy teaching, we can't see everything that's happening and read the minds of the students in our classes." "Instructional coaches help teachers focus on their individual needs in the classroom, find resources to help bring growth in teaching and learning, and can help teachers get to a place where they're sharing best practices with one another." "Teachers across multiple grade levels don't get a chance to learn from one another. Instructional coaches can bridge that gap. They see what's going on in the classroom and can help connect like-minded teachers who may be teaching in different grade levels." That's all stuff that's, over the last few years, and I, because I knew this was going to come up today, there was a SMART brief from January of 2016. There's a guy by the name of Dr. Hetal Gawande, wrote some interesting books on medicine, but he's a surgeon, a research scientist, and an author. He says, "Coaching done well may be the most effective intervention designed for human performance." And contemplating his own professional development as a doctor, Gawande researched instructional coaches, providers of job-embedded support, and found compelling proof of the positive impact that coaching can have on growth in any industry. And lastly, there's a guy by the Jim, by the name of Jim Knight, who's considered, I guess, the guru of instructional coaching. He says, "For decades, research has confirmed that the big factor in determining how much students learn," which I think we're interested in, "is not class size or the extent of our standardized testing, but the quality of their teacher." So it seems to me the question comes down to, will coaches improve the quality of our teachers? If they do, I think we've got a decision to make. If we say we don't think coaches improve the quality of our teachers, that's another decision to make. And I would also mention, I think Bob, you said last night, we have 564 FTE in the district. If, if I hear from 10 teachers that they don't like coaching, or I hear from 40 teachers they'd rather have paraprofessionals than coaches, keep in mind there are 564 FTEs that we're responsible for helping improve their practice. How are we going to do that? What is the best way to have them improve their practice? Not, what is the best way to, you know, make their class size lower or give them another standardized test to do, but what's the best way for them to improve their practice? If it's not coaching, then that's a question.
Can I, and can I just quickly interject in for both Paula and Josiah on the spot and looking at the clock? I just want to get the most out of both of your times, knowing that you have to leave. Do you have any comments, Paula, before, before you have to leave?
Thank you. And I think everyone knows where I stand on this and I, I think I'm probably in the minority on this. But I think we all can agree, we know the research that, that says overwhelmingly, outside of a parent or guardian, the number one deciding factor and impact on a child's education is, is the teacher. And I go back to, if we truly are wanting to attract and retain the brightest and the best, why would we not give them every opportunity to grow and develop in, in that profession? I think I used this analogy before. Would any of us want to have a surgeon operate on us who said, you know what, I haven't had any professional development or any training in the last five years? I'm just, kind of just doing it on my own and I'm not improving my, my skill. And I think that, for me, it's very short-sighted to say that we are going to dismantle a program that has the kind of alignment and the potential efficacy to bring up all of our, our teachers and to be able to have, we know how isolating teaching can be, and to have another professional who can, who can really push us, push the teachers to, to enhance their, their skills. So I, I don't support this cut because I think it would be just a, a real blow. So I, I don't support this cut because I think it would be just a, a real blow to the teacher's ability to be able to, to, to grow and, and develop in their own profession.
Don?
I'd just like to say one other thing on this is that maybe we don't need to look at this as an all or nothing. Maybe, maybe we could look at tying it by 50%. And, and then, because if, if we keep this, we have to cut someplace else. And that probably has to come out of a classroom or it comes out of a teacher, other kind of teacher support system. So I, I, I don't think we should look at something like this right now necessarily as an all or nothing, but a portion.
Josiah, could you quickly speak to the survey that, or was it Denise that was going to speak to that, the survey, some survey with teachers, staff?
Yeah, I can speak to this. I can speak to that and then maybe can kind of pull it off together.
Okay. Just trying to get the most.
Yeah. So as you remember, we shared with you the first time we shared with, with what options were. Your entire principal group, this was not on their list to cut it, think that this is important. They don't want us to just go away. Last year, there was a survey done to teachers. 447 of them responded. There was a question, how impactful was the setting, how impactful was setting a professional goal, instructional, instructional practice? And they were able to choose one to five. No impact is a one. Five is very important. 56% were fours and fives, 88% were three fours and fives. So from no, yes. Another question was, how did you work with your instructional coach? The majority of people responded in professional goal setting, followed closely by assisting in their reflective practice, so what Josiah was speaking to. Third, helping them with implement responsive classroom and developmental design. And then the last question specific to instructional coaching was, how likely are you to utilize your instructional coaching in the goal-setting process? To which at that time, fours and fives, no impact, very impactful. 54%, three fours and fives, 75%. And I think what I would do to kind of pull it together is go back to the ALC discussion with regard to the all or nothing thing. What I can tell you right now is we, we aren't to the spot now where we have one coach in every building. So we're as bare bones as we can possibly be with instructional coaching. My recommendation to going all or nothing would just be that. Either, either we're doing this and doing it as well as we can, or we're going to choose something else. With regard to kind of the recommendation piece and, and cutting the budget. So George, to your point of all the teachers getting feedback, I look at that as part of my responsibility. And, and what I would say is my recommendation to the board would be, take the professional, we figured out how to make do with cutting professional development by about 26%, 250,000 with curriculum, 26% out of that budget structure, to get you at least 500,000 of cuts out of PD and curriculum. And for right now, leave instructional coaching alone because it has residual impacts on Q Comp right now. And if it's something we want to touch in the future, that gives us in the Q Comp board and you, something we can talk about. But my recommendation professionally would be, let's do the PD, let's do the curriculum, let's get 500 that we know we can sustain moving forward by slowing a couple of things down. Not impact RC right now, not impact developmental side, not impact that. So for me, as the person who's kind of in charge of the programming side, with regard to this and the PD, that I am recommending to as a board, choose PD and curriculum, leave instructional coaches now, let's revisit it later if we need to. I think that's the best way to go about it.
I, I thank you very much for laying that all out so eloquently. You make an incredible argument, as did you, George, with your resources and information. And I think I speak for myself, at least I say for myself, that we understand how valuable having instructional coaches in, in our school system. It really is. It's, it does make a difference. And yes, there is a lot of research that I'm aware of, that, you know, professional development and support for instruction is, is really, really important in, in improving the quality of education. I think, you know, it's a really simple question that we're faced with right now, and that is that, you know, where we have to make cuts and what's the least amount of, you know, harm that will be caused by those cuts. So if we don't cut from this, where do we cut from? And are we being smart about that? You know, what's the impact on our students? What's the impact on our families? What's the impact on our community? And so that's where we're coming from, not just the instructional quality piece, but also just overall, like what, what is this, how is this perceived by our community? And so that's just my little statement there, I guess. But I have a question. It, I think you were trying to get to this earlier, Shelley, that, you know, if, if the 450,000 that is being used from Q Comp is being used to support instructional coaches, is that, are those funds that if the Q Comp board were to decide to do something different with that money, could that money be then put into professional development to offset the cuts that are being made in professional development? And would that still, obviously you said it would require some changes in what the sort of proposed plan is for professional or for Q Comp, but would it be possible to make that work?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
But it would take, it couldn't happen right away because the plan is submitted to the state annually. And so it needs to be part of the plan. It would be a process. But the general answer to that question is yes, that's possible. They're just, you can't just shift them today.
So when does that plan need to be submitted?
Every, is it August, Josiah, that we turn in? August that we turn that in?
So we submitted a plan this August for this year.
This year, yeah.
And so if we were to work on that, it's possible we could come up with something that would be submitted for August of, for, for next year. And those Q Comp, that 450,000 could be shifted in some strategic way towards professional development instead of, instead of having the instructional coaches. And, and fully saying, you know, look, this, this is a crunch time. We're in, we're in a tight financial time. This isn't forever. This would be something that we're looking at for a temporary solution.
Yep.
Two years, maybe.
Here's what I would say to that, is you're not gaining that much more in dollars by doing it that way than just taking the 250 and the 250. Because remember, out of the general fund, there's only three coaches that are coming out of the general fund right now. So really what you're doing is just saying, we're not going to have instructional coaching. We're going to backfill professional development. And you haven't, I mean, you probably saved $100,000 more by doing it that way over net, but you, you, to your question of impact, you've eliminated an entire program. And the only thing that is, this kind of gets back to what Denise was talking about. If I'm a high school teacher, for example, and I see 120 kids a day and my instructional coaching is impactful, that singular touch point is impactful to 120 kids if we're talking about reaching out the kids. So, so you put that across the district, one coach in an elementary school, they're impacting an entire fourth grade, they're impacting that whole group. So I would, I would say you've got, you've got a pretty big impact. But...
I think there, there's one other piece here. So your principals weighed in, and this was the number one thing that they thought was effective for professional learning. We've got two buckets, really. You can think of it as two buckets. You've got your one bucket that is 500,000, 250 and 250. So the answer is if we don't do, I mean, kind of what our approach has been is if we don't do instructional coaching, if we believe that has an impact on teachers, and your principals certainly do, if you don't do that, then you do the 500,000, 250 and 250. If you do all of it, then you have no support for teachers. And so when, when we're looking at student achievement and trying to get people better at their craft and what they're doing and having an impact on kids, it's going to be really difficult when Josiah comes to me and says, you know, Denise, you expect us to do all of this new literacy, but there's no professional development, there's no coach, there's no support. Now, one more thing I just want to say with that, and then Shelley, feel free to, to pop in. And now maybe I just lost it as I was thinking about that piece.
Question?
Oh, the forever thing. Sorry. The forever thing. You know, when we look at our instructional coaches, it has taken three plus, really four years of training to get them where they're super effective. And some of those that might choose to leave are the ones that also give us double bang for our buck. They are responsive classroom trained, they are new. Because when we look at these teachers, they'll go, if they would go back in the classroom, then your new teachers who have been hired will be the people that be let go. But some of those who have that high-end training won't go back into the classroom. They'll choose to do something else. The forever piece is, when you cut this, that doesn't mean that the next year it comes back and you still have highly qualified people. And I think one of the things that Josiah and I talked about is the last couple of times, we actually have hired outside of the district because we haven't had as many people stepping up for those positions. So that was my brain lapse. Sorry.
Thanks. And I appreciate what both of you said. So for me, when I look at it, it's not just, for me, it's closer to a million dollars that we would save if we did that and then could not cut the PD, but put that into that, what would be remaining in Q Comp. And I get that it had to be in, it had to go through Q Comp board. And I get nobody wants to cut it. And if we had the money, we wouldn't be talking about it. But we have two and a half million dollars. And the green list doesn't cut it, and there's things on the list that I know this board isn't going to. We already know the ALC is probably off the table. Gate may very well be off the table. Increasing class size, probably, we're not going to get there. So we have to get there. And unfortunately, it's really hard to measure their impact, right? Our achievement scores are not going up, they're going down. And so we, if we could say, here's what's happening and here's what we can point to, it would be a lot easier to not have this conversation. Unfortunately, we have to have it. The other thing is, you said we're bare bones, which I think is, if we have one coach at the high school with 165 teachers, the impact can't be that great. And even at the middle schools, I don't know how many teachers are there, but it's, it's a lot for one person to try to have really an overarching impact. And if we have 54% of teachers giving a four or five on how likely they're to use their instructional coaches, that's half our teachers who very well may not be. And I just, I think that's why it has to be on the table. And I appreciate that the principals said they don't want to cut because it's going to fall on them if it is cut because they're the instructional leaders. So then it just becomes, what are we asking them to do that they shouldn't be on their plate? But that's, that's just, and nobody wants to, but it's a big price tag and we have to get there somewhere.
If I can just interject, one thing I want to be careful of is, I don't know that you're going to be able to take all of that money and just shift it into PD because there are requirements for career ladder positions in our Q Comp plan. So we're going to have to work with the state to find out, does this mean we have to have some other kind of leadership? So that would take some of that away. I'm going to guess, because that was a significant part of our career ladder positions. We're going to have to do something. It may not be all of that that could just go back in. And the only other thing that I'd like to interject, and it actually isn't necessarily germane to the topic at hand today, but it certainly could get us, I mean, kind of provide the information the best you can and know what the road could look like in the future. Should you alter the Q Comp plan, and whether it's not meeting the terms, the board determines, we don't want to go there because it's no longer suiting the needs in which it was designed, or the union says that, in the event that goes away, that's a permanent deal too. Because there's a lot of people on the list to have that pan, plan in place. And we're not just going to be able to redo it two years later and get, we, we just happened to be placed where we were placed at that time. So realize if the plan were to go away and we moved away from Q Comp even for a year, the likelihood of us ever getting that back is pretty minimal.
Well, I don't think we're suggesting that.
No, no, I'm just saying, but kind of back to, if decisions lead to other decisions of, you know, this isn't cutting the muster as far as what either side wants it to look like, it, it's a, it's a chain of events. And again, it's not germane to today's conversation. It's just think about that.
Where I'm leading is, I, I think Don said it well. I, I don't want to cut the entirety that I'm looking at here. And, and I still, I, I think Shelley stated it very well. You know, we're not in a position that we'd like to be in, but we have to make cuts somewhere. I'm one of those people who thinks a 5% fund balance is a good thing. I think everybody thinks it's a good thing, but you weigh up priorities. And, and so what I'm looking at here, and I think I heard you say this, PD is the area on here as far as the coaches and the three that are allotted there could be cut. The others won't make any difference in your, your total funds. And so that seems to me a, a middle-of-the-road approach. Now, the biggest thing I do, and I come from last night as well, and we had a lot of stuff in front of us, and you asked, Denise, you touched on something I saw earlier, and that is, my question would have been, how long have we been doing this? And it's four years. I saw nothing in the data we, we saw last night that said it made a difference.
Well, the only, however, the only thing that I will say to that is, because we were all, some of us were in this conversation, and there's a big push from our community not to use that data as a, as a way to predict. I heard that from several people last night, that what else can we look at besides that data? So we just have to decide whether in that conversation, whether we're using that. The only other thing I would say to the, again, I, professional recommendation, if we're going to cut three instructional coaches, my recommendation is we cut it all.
Just do it all?
We do it all and we figure out a different way of doing it.
To Mike's point though, you've done enough educational statistics where you can't take just, here are the scores, instructional coaches haven't had an impact, because you have to have two sets of scores. These people had coaches and these people didn't. And now you can make a judgment, but you can't make a judgment just based on, we had coaches and I didn't see any impact.
Two, two responses. First of all, looking at the data last night, the big conclusion I think you have to make in testing is there are limitations to how much you can use the data. Now, I'm not suggesting you might, but I'm not comfortable in saying, we're not going to do MCAs or we're not going to have that data, we're not going to look at it. We do look at it, but we know there's limitations. Some of that, it's not a longitudinal study, it's different kids every year. But the fact of the matter is, if we've been doing this for four years, that ought to show up someplace.
I, I appreciate that, Mike. And I, I think right now, much of it is the qualitative piece. And here's something to think about. The, so we're starting our fourth year. So we've really had the instructional coaches who are here now in place for three years. The first year with Bold, the instructional coaches didn't have any oversight. They were, they didn't have training. They were doing the best that they could. The training that they've gotten now, when we first came, I mean, you know, I've been, I've tried to be really careful as an administrator coming in to recognize and appreciate the work of the people who came before me. But there are a number of things. And part of it is when you have a fresh set of eyes, that as a learning organization, we were very messy. And part of that, I have to believe, when I looked at, I just looked at last night, our budget cuts over time. And it's, we just have a continual roller coaster because we set ourselves up for what we're doing right now. And as soon as you lose the people who help with, it's a pressure and support, accountability, but making sure that we have the support for our teachers. We came in and our literacy was a mess. We're just starting year one district-wide. So I would say, and you commented on this last night, by the time that group hits through, we had our third graders take their first, by the time they take, take their reading again in fifth grade, you should really see some increases. One of the gentlemen said last night, this, you all know as educators, this doesn't happen overnight. But pulling off that support for our teachers, if you think that's going to increase and help support them in their work, it's not. And I understand that our principals are instructional leaders. It might be a good thing for each of you to shadow principal for a day to see what their life is really like, because there are opportunities to be those instructional leaders. When you have the behaviors, which Don, I know you've seen happening in classrooms, those are the immediate things that need to take precedent because of safety things for our principals. And so our recommendation as, you know, your, your principals and our recommendation is that you would take the 500,000. And if you want to look at instructional coaches moving forward, if you take all of that as a million, then you have no support for teachers. And that's, that's really what it is. It is no support for teachers because the work that we expect them to do, it has to be job embedded. It has to happen when they're here during the day. They, you know, don't care to come in in the summer. They don't want to be, we have, it's hard enough to pull them out of their classrooms, which we don't like to do either. But if you're really a board who's been talking about helping support students, we would recommend, we can make it work with a half a million. But if you take the half a million plus those three coaches, then I recommend you take the whole thing because it'll be piecemeal. And we'll continue to try, keep those, those coaches afloat, but they'll have weights on their ankles. It's not going to work. So either take the half a million and leave the coaches for a year, or take them both and, and be done and we'll move on. We'll deal with whatever it is, but we have to, we need to spend, we need to keep moving.
But really, you know, having worked with curriculum, and you have, and I have, others have, but even the fact that there were, each school was on its own in terms of how they of how they were teaching reading, et cetera, that's an administrative issue. And I'm saying instructional coaches aren't necessarily the ones to enforce that.
You know, I, I, I'm, I think it's a great time to have this conversation, but we're also talking about cutting administration. So if you don't have coordinators and people here to help do that work, it is, it is, you know, teachers are in the classroom, and they have their hands full. They can't go out and research, research what strategies work best, what curriculum, what, you know, should, how much phonics it should they be teaching. All of those things are administrative. But me professing that, oh, we're going to have a great new literacy curriculum, I'm going to bring you in for two days, you're going to learn it and then do it, that just doesn't work. You know that, Mike. I mean, you can't profess and train, you need to help with that support. So for our students and the things that we have, I would, again, I don't know how many times I need to say this, we would recommend you take the half a million, or it, it doesn't make sense to just keep a few. And I understand, Don, you're, let's not decimate it all, but it's one of those things that you aren't going to have the effectiveness in, because they're going to be so piecemeal throughout. And I, if we had any of our instructional coaches here, they could tell you that they're already stretched too thin. So then it would be, then we'll, then it'll be on the teachers to figure out how to get it done.
Can I just, I've, I've been up and down the river with this topic as well, and I started out opposed, and then I came, did a 180 on it, and, you know, I just, you see just vehement support for this from the principals. I, I went in thinking, well, maybe these, the teachers don't like it, and maybe they don't support it. But then I'm hearing, you know, based on the, the, the studies and the surveys, that that isn't, that really isn't the case. And, you know, where I, I have changed my tune on this is the fact that they do touch all of our kids. I mean, if there's one particular area that touches our children, it, it, it is all of them, you know? It is this. And I think where we as a board struggle, as I have, is you look at, this is a big sum of money. And, you know, that's my personal, you know, struggle, that, you know, holy cow, what could we do with this, these, these dollars? At the same time, the, and this is why we struggle with this as a board, it's going to, it, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm, I will say that I am now leaning towards supporting this program. I appreciate, Mike, your comments, which I, I agree with. You know, we want to see that these, we want to see that this is actually resulting in a positive impact for, for students via whatever it is, test scores, this, that, and the other. But at the same time, to Denise's point, it's four years into it, the first year, we didn't really do much with it, there was a lot to clean up. And, you know, Denise, we talked about this yesterday, maybe you can speak to it, but, because I'm going to have the numbers wrong, but it's one out of, at the high school level, an average ratio is one for, per whatever, 60, and then, yeah.
You're coaching typically, you know, a coaching model, and I don't think this has changed since I, so I created a Q Comp model in Matamida and in Spring Lake Park, and I remember the ratio, I think it was like one to 45 or 50. So for, I think Shelley shared that, that it's not, it's not as effective as it could be at the high school. What happens then is you have a coach who's working more with the people who are reaching out, saying, I'm struggling with this, I, I'm, I'm not able to, I need help supporting with student behavior, can you come in and observe me and see what things I can be doing differently? It could be, you know, whatever curriculum is up for adoption, it can be focusing on that group, or it could be focusing on our new teachers, our support for our new teachers who are in the system. So Andrea has to sit down with Rob and talk about, okay, what are those teams that are going to need this extra support? Because she can't do it with 165 people.
I see to George's point too, I mean, what we'd ask from the board is, you, really what you're deciding, right, is this amount of $348,000 that gets paid out of PD. If as a board, you say, you know what, we don't want you spending $350,000 on instructional coaches out of PD, if that's what you're saying, then we got to go back and figure out how we do the rest of it, with the Q Comp, with this, with that. All, I guess my, my only thing I would say is, please don't take the 350, and then do 250 on top of that, because we will have all of our teachers at some point going, you're not supporting anything you're implementing. So just from that budget, from the PD budget, please don't take 350 and 250, do one or the other, because I, I don't know how we support our teachers that way.
I'm, I'm just a little bit confused, because now I've heard both of you say that, you know, don't go halfway, either cut it completely, or don't cut it at all. So I guess that doesn't square with what you just said, I'm not sure if I understand. That's the first question. Second question is, what would it look like if we did just not have instructional coaches? What would, what would have to happen?
Sure. So here's, here's why it squares with, with what Seth is. To George's point, it's really, it really ends up being my job and the director's job to figure out how we pull it off, right? It's the board's job to say, we're cutting this, go figure out how to do it. What I think sometimes, or what I feel like sometimes, we get in these conversations where we kind of go back and forth with this management thing, and it gets frustrating for you, because there's a lot of intricacies in how it works, right? So that's why it's just easier to tell us how to, what you want us to do, and then we'll try to figure that out. To the other part, what it might look like then, the best I can describe is, it would be a negotiation with the Q Comp group, with the teachers, that we would have to go back and forth. That said, back to how it squares, is our recommendation, if you said, don't spend the 350 on instructional coaches, our recommendation would be to figure out something that doesn't include instructional coaching. Because we would figure out how to retool support for teachers in a different way, because we wouldn't be able to do justice to instructional coaching with half of them.
So even though we have three separate numbers sitting here, I mean, if you add them all up, that looks like a lot of money. But from what I can understand, you're saying that, that cutting in any of these three categories isn't really cutting, you can't use this money anywhere else that would cup, you know, cover some other costs that would, you can't find savings by doing it.
The only one is PD.
The only one is PD.
That's what I heard you say.
The other two's, two are restricted. I think, sir, where maybe, maybe it's confusing when you heard Bob say 250, is if you look on that green sheet again that Mike has, at the top, for professional development, we're saying, remember when we talked about why we have 250 and 250, is if you, if you aren't doing the curriculum, if you, let's say, we're new science, new next to science, if we say, we aren't going to do that this year, so we aren't buying new curriculum, so we don't need to give teachers support in how to use it. So when you look at that one, that's where that first line, we would hold off, we wouldn't implement new things, we put a freeze on kind of everything that we've done. But what we're saying is, if you do that, and then you go down and try to do the instructional coach piece, the instructional coach piece, then that doesn't give the support for the things that we're currently implementing, that are in the process right now. And so I think that's where, when he says 250, maybe that.
No, I just think, you just said, when we said, cut instructional coaches, either don't cut them at all, or cut, or cut them all, is what I heard you say. Is that what you mean?
It'll take some time, right? Because we can't, I mean, we can, we'll, we'll go to, so how this process would look, which I think you asked, is we go to Eric, and we'd say, we aren't supporting instructional coaches anymore, so we're going to see if there's somewhere else that we can use that $124,000. And that, remember, that can't go to things that we're already doing.
It qualifies for something with.
He would take it and create new programming, probably. It's usually, you have to create new stuff with that. With Q Comp, we'd have to go back to our Q Comp board, and we'd say, all right, now you're only going to have four coaches for the full district. What does that look like? And they might say, you know what, we know that that's not going to be supportive, so we are going to, I think last time, Q Comp took a year, year and a half to develop that plan. Now, I think with our board that, after being through it, I think that whole team, I shouldn't just say the board, that whole team could work through it probably in a more close fashion. But that's a negotiation process between the SCEA and you, it's not something where you just get to say, well, this is kind of what we want.
Don had his hand up a while ago, I'm going to go to Don.
Well, I, I think that, I'll just draw back on the years that I was a principal, how we dealt with this issue without that, this item. The, the thing is that subject matter changes, and problems in teaching that kind of subject matter change. So having an instructional specialist may make very good sense for a short time, but as the curriculum changes and the demands changes, the instructional professional that you hired is no longer really needed. I think what you need to do, you need to have instructional help, but one way to do it is to build into every building's budget enough money to, to hire one of your best classroom teachers in an area that needs instructional help, to have that person come and help that person period of time. Not for weeks and months, but for, for short periods of time. So if, if Mike, who's teaching, who has been hired to teach economics, he does, has never had a class in economics, probably the instructional director you have hasn't either. So when you're teaching the effects on inflation, on the stock market, et cetera, that instructional leader doesn't help either. But you may have teachers who know how to do this, and if you have to build in money to, in your budget, in your building budget, to hire this substitute for this teacher for a week, to go in and help that teacher learn the issues. I think you need to draw on the excellence of the teaching staff you have. Because I think in most cases, what I saw was, when you, when you brought in a so-called expert, an expert is an X and a spurt's a drip under pressure. But anyway, you need to make sure that they are able to go into that classroom and help that teacher. It isn't going to cost you $50,000 to do that over a period of, you're not going to have that many people who need it. And every, every teacher has teachers, every school has teachers, where the, they know who their master teachers are. And you need to utilize those skills, rather than, I don't think it's an all or nothing situation, I think it's a different pattern. But I don't necessarily believe, I mean, my teachers delivered two national schools of excellence under totally different programs. And a, a professional development person who has been teaching with all teams and houses to bring that person in, didn't do that much good. You have to utilize the expertise you have, and then find a way for them to use, pay them for the time that they have to take off to help. That's my judgment.
Can I just help clarify, I think maybe your question a little bit, in follow-up on Denise's comment? With instructional coaches in the Q Comp plan, as a district, we decide what positions and how many we're going to have. So as a district, if we say, we're not having instructional coaches at all anymore, we then need to work with the Q Comp committee and the Q Comp board to say, okay, those funds are not coming out of Q Comp because we don't have them. The Q Comp committee then needs to decide, what's the plan going to look like, what are we going to do for career ladder? It's really within that budget, then we decide what that, how that's going to get spent. Does that make sense?
Right, so could, one option could be that they support professional development in some way.
That is, it says Bob said that.
So that would offset, that would cause us savings by however much money gets spent over in pop, pop professional development.
Right. Keep in mind, we may have to have some other kind of leadership positions in there.
Right, understanding that, but yes, that's true. A lot of complexity here, we understand that. I guess before we move on, and I, I agree, you know, maybe we, we probably do need to move on, but I just want to have a very clear idea of what the potential savings, when you look at instructional coaches, because we've heard lots of different things, what is the high level of potential savings that we could find through looking at the instructional coaches program as a totality? Clarifying once again, we all love it, we understand how valuable it is, but we have to make tough decisions somewhere.
Your savings are $348,692 as of today.
Okay, but 800, but what about the, what about the Q Comp money that?
I would not plan on any of that, because you don't know how that's going to work.
That wouldn't be for, that wouldn't be next year.
Or doesn't get to decide that.
You wouldn't be able to count on that savings for next year, you'd have to start working on that plan, and then you'd.
Yeah, but they'd have eight months to.
But you're speculating though, right? So just based on what Kathy just said, you're spec, the only thing you can control, and that's what, you really can only make a decision on what you can control. And you, in that question, all you can control is the $348,000 that is getting paid out of professional development, which is.
But we could say, we could go to them and say, the board has asked to find savings.
Right, but they, I think, I think, so with this piece of it, so that's a partnership. And if our, you know, our, our teachers and our principals have shared, I know that you've heard that some that don't like it, and I have my own theory about what that is, but when you look at this, they might say, you know, we can't have eight, but we want to have four. And that might be something that they might have their feet in the sand over, and then it might be, then it won't be a savings too. So what we're just trying to, our job is to give you the possibilities. We, you know, when you go in, it's much like negotiations. I mean, you go in and you, you have to talk about coming to kind of a, a place that both, both groups can agree to, that's a, a good plan. And so we're just trying to tell you that might be a possibility, and if it's a possibility, you can't really hang your hope, your hat on hopes for that.
Q Comp isn't a permanent thing. It could go away.
Well, in transition wise, Denise, you mentioned negotiations. Keep in mind, you're going to be negotiating with the Q Comp board on these dollars at the same time that you're negotiating for salaries. And from what I've heard, we're not going to be able to do a pie in the sky on salaries. So how willing is the Q Comp board to be willing to say, oh yeah, we know you need savings, but we'd like to put it here, because we know we're not going to be able to get much salary going into next year? I, I think the idea that, oh, some money's going to be available here while we negotiate salaries, I think that's the pie in the sky that we're being pretty naive about. My other question would be, what makes us think that even though the principals and directors, 13 said, leave it alone, we're smarter, and are saying, no, we should remove them? I, I, that's one piece I just can't get through. And I, I wish somebody would explain to me why, even though the principals and the directors say, leave it alone, 13 out of 15, why, why are we not supportive of that? I mean, to me, it's that and elementary intervention are the two that they're saying, leave them alone. What, what makes us?
I'll just say this, and I might be shooting myself, but I think it's their job to raise.
Their recommendations.
But I think we're all going to choose the things that are closest to us, and I think that is going to affect them the most. If we remove that program, it's going to make a big impact on our principals. And they do have a lot on their plates, so I think that's.
Okay, but now, when you say that, they have a lot on their plates, but we're going to put more. I mean, we, we have to continue the conversation. I mean, yeah, there's a lot on their plate, yeah, they've added TDEP, which I'm not sure back when you were a principal, Don, they were even doing that kind of stuff. But, I mean, they're expected to do the walkthroughs, and they're expected to do the evaluations, and they're expected to make sure that, that each point of TDEP is being met, and yet, we're saying, there's a lot on your plate, but by golly.
But I think the conversation then is, what, what may not have to be on their plate that is, I think it's not just like, here, we're going to add 20% to your job, but I think it can't be off the table because their plates are full, it just needs to be part of what we look at. But again, that's not our job to figure out, what are they going to do?
And that's what I agree, it's not our job to say, instructional coaches are the way we want you to cut professional development, that goes back to my opening statement. We say $500,000, get it done. Or we say $780,000, get it done. I think our job is to give a number and say, get it done, you're the professionals.
Yeah, but we don't pass on and say, hey, you find where to cut to get 2.4 or 2.5 million dollars. We don't turn that over to the principals and say.
No.
We ask them for their perspective. If you were saying to me as a principal, what are your priorities, and that's what they gave us, ours don't necessarily coincide with that. Are we going to be cognizant, aware, sensitive to what their preferences are? You bet, that's a factor, but it's not the only factor. If you ask me as a principal, does an instructional coach help my job? That's a very good question. I'm not sure.
I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the question. It's not whether it helps your job, I think the question is, does it improve student achievement? Which is our number one job.
And I'm saying I'm skeptical, because in the last four years, I haven't seen it.
And I've told you why I think that's the, as you mentioned, we get a new group of kids every year. kids every year. You, you know what I think about standardized testing. It's ridiculous the way it's done.
I would agree, there's better ways, there's limitations, but I wouldn't throw it out with the bathwater.
It's growth.
Okay. I think maybe we need to move on.
One thing that we need to keep in mind here is we're looking to cut money. You can, you can cut money or you can lose money. As I look at some of the proposed cuts, if we cut some of those programs, having worked in this district as long as I did, I know if some of those programs are cut, we're going to lose hundreds of students at $10,000 a kid. I need, you need to look at what the costs are going to be and then evaluate what you think your loss of parents choosing to go send their students to other schools or charter schools. That's a big loss, and it's going to be huge if we make a couple of notes that I saw.
All right, okay, you should move on a little bit. That's okay, sorry to come in and say that, but just...
Yep.
Thanks, thanks, Don.
Yeah. So our next piece is to give you some information. You asked about administration. So with administration, I just want to remind the board that we are at four or slightly under 4% of our organization. One of the things that you need to keep in mind when you look at this is, I know that some folks are trying to look at Edina or Eden Prairie or other places and do apples to apples comparison. We aren't able to do that. Many of those districts have in their teacher contract where a teacher on special assignment can come up and help support literacy or math or, we don't have that. When our teachers leave, they currently, we had an MOU, and you'll see when we look at our coordinators, that they had to move out of the teachers' union and into the coordinator role. We're going to go through this sheet with you and explain some of that. But we also, you, if you look at your management report and your audit, you'll see that we're well below state and the seven county metro area for cost for administration. I know there was a question about, why did we do all metro instead of just the east side of the metro? When we started our comparisons, we left out the west side of the metro because they weren't as relevant. And there are higher salaries, there are higher property taxes, all those kind of things. So that change was made, I believe, back when Tom Nelson was here. Kathy, do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I have it in your executive summary that you got. But when Tom Nelson was here, we made a change, starting with the 1517 round of negotiations. And we actually reduced the list so that our comparables are Forest Lake, Hastings, Moundsview, North St. Paul, Roseville, South Washington, and White Bear. So you can see a lot of the conversation when Tom was here, is we took out the Edinas and the Minnetonka's and the other ones that may not be, they're some of the higher paying ones to make a more comparable group.
What, are you reading off this sheet?
No, she was not. No, I was just answering the question about the comparables that you had asked Mike about.
Yeah, I was just looking for that, what you were saying.
Oh, it's in your executive summary. I was just reading from the executive summary.
So I'm going to ask Kathy to go. We tried to color code, you wanted information of who had positions in 2014, who has positions in 2017, 18. She did some color coding for you. We, you'll be able to see how we've combined different positions and how we've changed things internally. And then we'll give you some examples of other ways that we've done that. That's what you, your job is as management is to get the most bang for your buck. So we're going to give you some examples of how we've done that, and I'll have Kathy walk you through that.
So what you have in front of you, I think, Mike, the question that you had posed is the difference between 1415 and 1718. So I tried to put this in as simple of a picture as I could for you, just to walk you through what this is showing you. So on the left side, you see that at the top, the positions. And then in the middle, you see the position holder, and then there's the blue column and the green column. So the blue column is your 201415, and your green column is the 1718. So if you just follow, I'll just follow the first line across. Superintendent, 1415, Tom Nelson was here, his salary is 165. In 1718, Denise was here, salary is 187, 272. So what I tried to just give you straight across, what then versus 1718. Then you'll see my name, there's the position. One of the questions, Mike, you had asked is, where did titles change and positions get changed and upgraded? So if you look there, you'll see Director of Administrative Service. My position was changed to an Executive Director of Admin Services. If you continue down the column, you'll see there's a couple places. So Kristin, the position was Director of Operations, or Director of Finance. Kristin had Director of Finance. That position was changed to Executive Director of Finance and Operations. So if you look at that next line, Denny Bloom was here at the time in a Director of Operations. That position was eliminated. The duties were combined with Kristin's, and hers became Executive Director of Finance and Ops. So what this is showing you across the rows is where any changes were, changes in staff, changes in salary, and where positions were eliminated. And the second one, where there was a position eliminated, if you go down to Executive Director of Elementary, you'll see Melinda Lansvelt was here, Executive Director of Secondary, Ryan was here. One position was eliminated, they were combined to create one Executive Director of Learning and Innovation, which is Bob. So you can see all of the pieces kind of line by line that should answer, I hope, Mike, your questions that you were asking.
The next part, Kathy, that I was curious at, and seems to me related, is the next level, is that what's underneath?
Yeah, let me keep going. So what you'll see then is, if you look at the blue section, this goes back to that budget report that you were looking at with the 11 versus the 14. So there were 11 positions in 201415, and then the total salaries, the total benefits, and then the total all for salaries and benefits for 1415 was 18, or 1.86. Then if you follow over to the green side, you'll see that that list continues down, and the green has one, two, three, four, five additional people. So that brings you to your 14 positions in 1718. What I'm showing you here is, on the left, you'll see, for example, that first line, Student Support Services Coordinator, Denny Bloom, and a salary. What happened is that position was eliminated, and a new position replaced it, and Carolyn Ziski was put in as that Assistant Director of Student Support Services. So as with the change when Kristin took Finance and Operations, Kristin assumed Denny Bloom's duties. The only other change, so that, that's a full savings of Denny's salary, with the exception of Supervisor of Facility and Site Operations, was Tony. Tony went to a Manager of Facilities and Site Operations with about, salary-wise, it's about an $8,000, this is salary and benefits, an $8,000 increase. So you literally saved Denny Bloom's salary minus the $8,000 for Tony to be upgraded.
Okay, and Denny's salary really went two places, it seems to me? Because part of it was the upgrade in Kristin's position, and part of it was in the upgrade in Tony's position.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
I'm going to speak for you on, sorry. Those three in black, would they be listed under the Coordinator, Supervisor, Specialist, and Tech Support line?
In 1415, the reason they're in black and kind of just off to the side, I wanted you to have them, but in 1415, they were not in the Directors, they were in the Coordinator, Supervisors group. So those were, what happened is positions that were in a different line item in your budget moved, the positions were there, they were moved to the Director group and upgraded. So when you get to the bottom of the green, then you'll see there's the 14 from your budget report, the total salaries, total benefits, and then the salary and benefits there for the 1718. Does that, does that all make sense to you?
Yeah, I think. Underneath the blue position holders, total salaries, total benefits, total all in blue, that's 201415. Then directly, well, you skip a bunch, and then you go down to the middle, and the green is the total of the right.
Yes.
Okay?
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So what I, in carrying that through, then, if you go to that bottom, and Mike, I think this was another question, where did the increases in the budget? So that's what I'm trying to just demonstrate for you.
Thank you.
So if you follow to the bottom, you'll see the blue number, the 1.8 carries down, that was your 1415. The green carries down, 2.5, which is an increase of $673,000. So what you see next is me breaking down as best as I can, back to all the history, where that, where those increases came from. So that first line, $200,000, when Denise came to the district as part of Tom's process when he was doing, he puts $200,000 aside for Denise to do Restructure of the Administrative Support Team. In addition, when the budget reductions were made at that time, we actually overreduced the budget, and then we eliminated some consulting, we had some consulting for PD and things that was also eliminated. So that was an additional 110 that was overreduced to help when Denise came to pay for restructuring. Increased costs from...
Kathy, I'm going to hold you up here.
Go ahead.
So that consulting piece, we didn't have a full-time, we didn't have a Melinda Fier Westberg, who was at the meeting last night and shared, does all the data analysis and helping with that. We didn't have anybody working in that position. So we were hiring somebody, a retired assessment person from Bloomington, I believe he was, to do that work as a consultant at a higher rate. So we got rid of that position.
Okay, and if we go back to 201415, we didn't have that position at all?
Well, we did. We were paying, that's where the, the second one, or the, yeah, that's where the negative, minus 110,000, we had that position, but it didn't come up as one of our positions because they weren't an employee, they were consultants. So he was acting as an employee, but he didn't have, well, that should be an office or not, but most of his, he did at home and sent the information into it. So it was a position that we were paying for, but it was listed under, if you go back, you'd see it under consultant, not under one of our coordinators or directors.
So Chris, Chris Balo left. We brought an independent person in to do some of the work of Chris Balo. That independent person got changed back to an employee, is essentially what happened. So it's the swap between employee to outside person to employee.
When the community asks us, which is out there in various forms, you know, we've added admin, we've added so much in central services over the years. Help, help us, if you could, you know, just kind of speak to that. You know, when we have a community member that comes and says, holy cow, central services is just packed to the brim, and we've added so many heavy suits and whatnot, I'm just, I'm just being honest, you know, help us speak to that.
That's, that's what we're going to try to do.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Well, Kathy finished, don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
The 235, this is the increased cost resulting from board-approved contract parameters. So for the two contracts, you had approved parameters, remember, in one of those, we did getting people to average, so there was some bigger jumps in there. This is based on the base costings, because it's the easiest way we could get you numbers, so it's not exact by any means, but what we did was took the base and said, based on the base people, which remember, that changes before we actually implement the contract. This is what the increased costs were anticipated to be that the board approved for contract increases. Restructure of Admin Team Executive Directors...
Kathy, before you move off that, you're at the 235,000, and it's a negative, so it actually went down, is that what you're saying?
No, she subtracted it from the 673,000. So if you have that as your total change between those years, what accounted for that change, and she's drawing off to say, what's the difference?
Okay, thank you.
Restructure of Admin Team Executive Directors and Manager Position back, that was where the, part of the Tony and then Executive Directors, there's about 41,000. And then there was an increased cost where I shared with you that Carolyn Ziski came over, so that increased cost to add that Student Support Services Director, which was not part of our structure plan back in 1516, that actually was a cost, an increased cost of 65,000. So what you see left at the bottom is the 21,000, which is likely from things such as, so if an employee was in single insurance and moved to family insurance, that's going to cost more money that the, that we wouldn't have necessarily counted for. You might have had people in the contract when you did the contract for the settlement, but somebody else, that person left and somebody else came in and was at a step higher. So there's an increased salary that wouldn't have been accounted for. So, I mean, there's some things in there I can't tell you down to the penny, but there's some things that could change in there.
Thanks, thank you for coming up with this.
You're welcome.
This is something that I wanted to say for a moment.
That, that 235,000 to, Mike, you'll remember, I mean, that is what the board approved at the time to try to bring, and I think we looked at all employees during that, during those years, to try to bring everybody to average at least for our employees. I mean, I think that was the driving force.
I appreciate you saying, I made that note also, George, on here, because when the first round of negotiations, when I first came and we started that, that was a board directive dress through parameters is to try and get everybody up to average, because many of our folks within this building and our admin staff out in the buildings and our tech staff had always been below that average. So some of those boosts look like they're more, but it's actually to get up to close to average, which, you know, doesn't last too long, but gave a good solid try.
I have a question. Thank you for this, this answers really well. One of my questions, my other was about the line, that Coordinator, Supervisor, Specialist, Technical Support line, did, did you do the same with that?
So I didn't, I wasn't able to do this level of detail, and here's, here's why. I did, went and pulled some information. So there are so many, because that group has coordinator positions, supervisor positions, tech support positions, it's got all of our building secretaries, all of those positions are in there, there is so many changes that to track one change and what happened with all of it. What I can share with you though is, I just pulled out some of the things, and this will kind of give you an idea of the significance of the change. You have to be really careful when you're just looking at that, what you're looking at is a headcount. So, for example, we had, one of the changes that happened during that period of time was, we used to have eight tech paras that were in the tech para bargaining group. When John Perry came and did a lot of work on the tech department and restructuring and making it more effective and efficient, he eliminated tech para positions, so eliminated eight positions and replaced them with three in a different bargaining unit. So that kind of shows, tells you how it's very difficult. I don't have a way to track all of those individual changes. The other piece is, as an example, so we have due process clerks that we've put into the buildings for, to support our special ed teachers. Our due process clerks are split up so that we might have a due process clerk that works Monday, Tuesday, another one that works Wednesday, Friday, and one that works Thursday. You have three headcount to fill one full-time position. So I, I wasn't able to give you the detail on that group because of the extent of changes.
Kathy, something that I think would be useful, and I'm not asking for it now, I'm just saying perhaps even for future negotiations, is on the bottom here, you've come up with a total all salary and benefits, and you've come up with that for 1415, and you've come up with it for 1718. What might be nice, and it reminds me of, almost like our student account, is to see in those intervening years, what, what the total cost of all salary and benefits were for, say, the five or six, or four or five that are in between there.
I can, yeah, if I can provide that.
Thank you.
Kristin, when, when we had the audit, the management report, and we were compared in a lot of categories, but administration has germane to this discussion right now. And when we compared administration and district support, if, what was his name at the audit?
Aaron.
Aaron. I think I asked him the question, but when we're listed as spending 90% of what the seven county metro area average is, we spend 90%, are we comparing apples to apples with that UFRS code?
With the UFRS code, we should be. I mean, that's the point of the UFRS code, is to have uniform financial reporting, right? Where, what's hard when we look at this sheet, and maybe what's always been a little bit challenging when we're trying to answer the question internally versus what our audit says, is what gets reported into those categories is not the same as this sheet. So when we look, I mean, in some, it is, but in the audit, when you look at district administration, you actually take like Kathy and me and John Perry out, and you put in your principals. And we're actually considered District Support Services, and that's not reflected. So we're talking...
They define it different.
So we're, we're talking, so as a whole, compared to others, when you lump those categories, absolutely, they're, they're as best as anybody can get apples to apples. When you start pointing out who's in particular bargaining groups, this isn't going to match a number in our audit, because how we report it is different, to get uniformity amongst the state of Minnesota, is very different than how we negotiate it.
Okay, and my concern... Okay, and, and my concern is when somebody says to me, we're bloated in administration. Can I make the statement and have it be a true statement? We spend 90% of what other districts in the metropolitan area spend on administration and district support? Or am I lying?
Per student, yes. We're lower, what we spend per student is less. What, where the, then, again, then the, the understanding or how people see it, if they're looking at this and saying, yes, that I can go into, and just because they're neighbors, I can go into Matamede and they don't look like this in their bargaining groups. Well, that's true, but when we all roll up at the end of the day and how we're essentially told we need to all compare apples to apples, we are. It's just when you're grabbing snippets of information that it's going to look to.
Right, I just want the, I just want to make that broad information.
That is a fair statement.
Because 64,000 people in the district aren't going to go to that level of specificity. I just want to tell them and not be lying when I make that statement.
Per student, that is correct.
I had another just question on the, the sheet with the, with the black. I don't know who's, who is the one to answer this, but, so can you just, just go back to that? And so these, those positions in the black were not there and they were moved. Can you just go back to that and just give me another run through quickly on that? Because to the, you know, look at, oh, we've got, you know, blah, 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 blah. So I just speak to that a little bit quickly?
Yep, so-
Again?
In 14, 15, there was a student support services coordinator position that was Randy Lowe.
Okay.
That position was eliminated out of a coordinator position and an assistant director of student support services was added in the director group. So a position was eliminated and money came out of one category and a new position was added with an increased cost in a different category.
Okay.
Same with Tonys. Tonys was in a coordinator supervisor group, was eliminated, moved to a manager, which is in the director's bargaining group. They're in the part of that. Our tech director that we had prior to Jeff, or to Jer, John Jerry, was a coordinator, not a director. So that position came out of the coordinator group, got moved. The two that you see, so George Nolan and Rachel Larson's current positions. So George Nolan is the director of personalized learning. He did not, that wasn't a position that came from somewhere and got moved to a new group. It was an add of a position, however, it was a replacement of a position that we had in, prior to 14, 15. So we had a coordinator personalized learning. In 14, 15, we cut it because Rachel Larson was that person member. She left the school and came, the coordinator, went to Withrow Marine. That position was never filled. When Denise came, she brought it back. So it was an existing that had been cut and was brought back. Then the last one, you'll see Rachel's current position, the learning analytics and system improvements, that was just a new position. That was part of that 309 when Denise came of restructuring that was added. So there isn't one that was anywhere else that got pulled out of a different group and added to a new one.
Okay, okay, thank you.
A question, cut, follow-up question, the John Frye position, student support services program administrator? Who's doing that now? Do we, did that not get filled or is that filled?
Uh, yes, Caitlin Willis is doing that.
Okay.
Kathy, what was the year, 2014, 15? What role did Eric play? Eric, as far as curriculum, Eric Anderson? Didn't he fill kind of a curriculum role of some sort that year under Tom Nelson?
He was still in integration, but I think Tom had him doing some additional duties in the role he held. He didn't change his role. He had some additional duties that year, I believe.
Yeah.
We got the, the summer school program when it was not at Anderson.
Summer success, yes.
Yes.
That brings up another important one.
Targeted services too.
Go ahead.
Well, another thing just to keep in mind when the coordinator thing, Shelley, is that in Stillwater, we, we don't typically run teachers on special assignment in these positions. We run coordinators. And so other districts, what you, if you're going to compare the districts, other districts have a different way of doing that where they use teachers on special assignment. And why that's important is you can have the equivalent job, but because they're a coordinator, now they're going to get reported in that head count as a coordinator, where someone like Eric Anderson, who is on a teacher of special assignment, he's the one that is that way. He, his head count would live in the teacher's contract, not anywhere on the administrative side. So there's little nuances like that that happen.
Well, if I can add to that too, to, to that point, Bob, is there are, so keep in mind, these are all positions. So for example, the ECFC added a receptionist. That's paid out of the community ed budget, not out of the general fund, but it's in that number. Same thing, high school, they hired a person part-time to do help with sub calling that's in the tech support. So it's in that tech support line, but it's actually paid out of Rob's budget at the high school. So it's not the general fund that's paying. So it's, everything is in there and it's-
And the coordinator, do you want to comment on the early childhood? Didn't we have, or community ed, didn't we have like five or six new coordinators?
Well, there was coordinators, so in 14, 15, we had coordinators, but we had a director and an assistant director or manager. I'm not sure the title. When Annette came, she restructured and did more of a coordinator model and got rid of the assistant director. So, I mean, those are some of the places where you see more bodies, but the money was used in a different way or restructured. And it's not your general fund budget, it's out of the community ed budget.
Kathy, the question I've got is, on the top, it's fairly easy. I mean, you've got a superintendent, you've got a superintendent. Director of administrative services or director of finance. Some of those, it would seem to me in practice, they vary from district to district in terms of the expectation and the duties. So I'm saying that's less accurate than superintendents are pretty similar in what they do in most districts.
Yes and no. A lot of the, a lot of the business, you'll see in districts, they'll either be a finance or they'll be business managers of finance and ops. Those are very, if it's just finance, that was very much the same. Finance and ops is not that uncommon, so it is pretty much, they are very similar when they actually are equal positions. There's not a ton of them that are finance and ops though.
Yeah, well, what I'm thinking of is, for example, and maybe it's not a good example, is 9, 16. For the longest time, we had a person who was the business person, was the HR person.
Right.
And I think there was a third one in there as well.
Yeah.
And, and that, that one is very distorted when you start comparing here.
Yeah.
And I was wondering, in the metro area, do you run into that same sort of thing where the expectations for finance in Stillwater are higher than perhaps at Mounds View or something like that?
When we do our, this really is really more back to the negotiations piece of things, but when we do the comparison information, I, I note in my comparisons, if it's a different title and it might be slightly off, and in some cases I've excluded those out. If they're, if they don't look pretty close, like if Kristin's, for example, was just finance and the other one was finance and operations, I wouldn't have included that salary as a comparison to get to the average.
So you do that kind of?
I do that in the model when I'm calculating, like if the parameters are average, I'm very particular about making sure we're trying to compare, compare apples to apples and not inflate those numbers. It's easier with the districts we have now. When you had Edinas and Minnetonka's, some of those were where we had to.
It seemed to me that the transition where we used more east metro came when, when Tom was here the second time.
Yeah, it did.
Shelley, you have some?
Thank you. I get what you're saying about head counts, but I'm still a little stuck on that coordinator. And it, it looks like 17 positions in two years, but maybe it's not 17 FTE positions. And I'm looking at-
Are you looking at this page? I, I have notes for a moment because I've been trying to calculate numbers.
Well, and so that's where I wonder, because even when I look at the total, it looks like we've gone up 50 staff members between those two years when we, our enrollment has stayed the same. So I'm wondering if it's, how hard it would be to find FTE instead of just head count?
So if you look at your 14, 15, it's 105. So it's 105 to 116. If you look strictly at due process clerks, we have six more. So, but then you, remember, I told you, there's some areas where we took people out and then, so as, I don't have a way, Shelley, to go back and get you the detail on those because there's so many changes that happen in there.
For example, Karen, Karen Laddell, Denise Cody were, were in the teacher's contract, but now because of that, the way we have it negotiated with the teachers' union, they have to be coordinators. So they will show up as two more, so now you're up to eight already, where they were, those two were already bodies in the count overall. It's just the shit.
And the three tech, right, because they went into there.
Right, and then remember you have, so this is where it gets difficult. I can probably go to board meetings and tell you, here's all the places where we added. But for example, the eight paras that came out of another group and came into a group, those are the things that make it kind of messy.
Well, and that's why I think it's hard when you look at this and you see an increase in 50 staff overall in a time when our enrollment stayed almost exactly the same. Then, so what is going on there?
You don't see the, you don't see the net picture, right? You see like where we've added, but you don't see where we've taken and moved around behind the scenes, you know what I mean?
Well, but when our count was still, if we're just moving, then our, our total count would stay the same, you know what I mean? Like that's what I'm looking at now is the total, the bottom line.
Not necessarily from a head count though, because if you, let's say in this year, you have one person teaching, let's say it's a teacher position, right? They're teaching one position in one building. And for whatever reason, something shifts where now that position is between this building and this building and you've hired two half-time people.
Right, and that's why I was asking if you could get FTE.
But your FTE hasn't changed.
Well, that's what I was asking if it's possible to get that for those two years.
Oh, I see, so we don't have FTE on, so we, we do not have FTE on our tech support. They're not calculated, they're just calculated by total hours per year. So there's not an FTE to pull on those.
What, what does happen, much like with anything, we have to draw data at a particular point in time. And what this comes from, this information comes from is what's called STAR reporting, which is essentially employee reporting at a particular date. And honestly, it depends on the moment at that point in time, because if you are to have a teacher that happens to be out on a, on a leave, let's say they are having a child, and then you have a long-term sub in, you actually could have two people that are accounted for in that STAR report where one would just happen to be a long-term sub at that time. So it's, it's, unless you pull out person by person and FT by FT, it's, it's, it's hard to get a, to say exactly this is what has happened. It's easier in a, in a smaller group, but overall, that's a challenge.
Even just for what I gave you today, I had to go dig out phone directories from 14, 15 to figure out who was in a position to figure out what happened to that position. So, and that's for 11, 14 people, so it's very difficult to track back. We have staffing sheets to track all of our teachers by the minute, but we don't track our tech, our support staff that way. We do now, we started doing that in the last year or two, but we have not done that in the past.
Thank you.
And I have one more thing to touch on for you to see where you are with this. We have, you know, the question of consulting has come up and Kathy provided with you a couple of sheets. One was the consulting budget history and we shared with you those numbers. And then we're actually, if you adjust it in 2017, 18 for the teachers on call, we were negative 2%, which is a move in the right direction. But she also gave you the three, three plus page document that she went through and she has stacks here, I think, or maybe you didn't bring them.
Of those?
Yeah, the consulting pieces.
Oh, that's interesting.
Kathy, she's, the stacks that she has right here is this three-page document that you have. So when you look at the top, benefits administration, it shows you the five big people that money is paid out for, for that consultant work. And she gave you a couple of examples, a board, or work session or two ago, about how it actually saves us money to use those consultants because they do the work for cheaper than we could if we had a person in here. The district operations is one of the budgets that you see that's about 263,000. And then there's facilities, health and safety, security, staff training. And what basically she did is in each of these areas, took all of the accounts from under there and put the total amount under here. So one of the things, I know there's a thought that we can reduce consulting. I would argue that out of a 1.75, $1 million budget to take out a million, you're going to find as you sit down and go through that, that, that would be really difficult. But we're happy to do that. And so one of the things you might want to do either as a board for a work session, it's going to take a while. So you can decide as a board, as a work session, or if you want to have the finance working group subgroup do it and then bring the results back to the board. We're happy to sit down with you and explain what some of those things are. As I've shared in the past, some of the ones that actually would probably, you know, when you look at the educational programming, a lot of those are people who come in and we pay for the, the experience, but we might get a check reimbursed then for say, the partnership plan. Or for Klein Theater, we pay for it as a district because we need to do that, but then the PTO will reimburse us for that. So that's the case with many of our educational programming type things. Some of them, as I shared, are if we have a, anybody, I think this is difficult for some of our community members to understand, is that anyone who is, anyone who does not work for the district and get a weekly, or bi-weekly check is called a consultant. So if we have somebody come in and judge our music programming, they are a consultant. If we have somebody come in to help coach our music students, they are a consultant. So those are things where if you want to take a deeper look into what those are and if there are areas that you think you'd like to say, you know, we don't want to do this for educational programming anymore, we can look at the, the facilities and health and safety. But again, many of those are things that we benefit from what they do for us. And this is, you're seeing the expenditures, you aren't seeing the revenue coming in on the other side. Kathy does have overall revenue where it comes back in. And then the final thing, just another example, is like when we had our Stanford University design, you'll see a big ticket item there for $40,000. We are, we made that money back by having our, holding our conference. So remember that when you see these, you're just seeing the expenditure side. You aren't seeing where we've been reimbursed by PTO's partnership plan, conferences, those kinds of things.
Well, and what I'd share there is that part, Kristin, I've had these talks because when you go through the dispersments, sometimes it's not very clear and sometimes in our conversation, that's an easy example.
Yep, you're right.
So do we have a copy of the one you just referenced?
Yep, you should have both of these. And I think Barb actually also sent them in.
So was it what she handed you at the last board meeting?
Okay.
She handed you, you already had a copy of the one, but I gave you another copy with the details, so you have the info.
Yeah, the details are what I'm curious.
Yeah, that's the one, she gave both of that, it's the board meeting.
Should be in your packet from our last board meeting.
Shelley, an answer to your question for the report that you have. At the end of the long list of all the individual expenses, it tells you the, the cash receipts, which is money that would come back, and Kristin could probably speak better, but cash receipts that are applied to that consulting for that budget that I shared with you is $83,811. It's dollars that came back in and were credited to that consulting budget.
Okay, I'm lost.
Well, all I did was give you the expenses broken down by category total.
Well, so not this sheet, that other sheet that you, is that right? Not the district?
No, I'm just looking at this budget report where Denise was saying what you don't see is the money that came back into credit towards all of that. That, that number on this report is 83,000.
So 83,000 is what we were reimbursed, which you don't see on this because this is just expenditures.
So of the 1.7 million, 83,000 came back, is that what you're, that's what it is?
Eighty-three, just on, just about 84.
All right, I think that is, are there other things that we, we had hoped that we covered everything that you asked for? We went through emails and tried to piece together duplicate things. I don't know if you want to have a conversation or what you want next step to be? If you want to talk about kind of those four options? You know, if you want to do nothing and use your fund balance to pay for this year's, this next coming year? If you want to do partial, if you want to do balancing expenditures and revenue or going deeper to kind of beef up the fund balance?
Can you give us timelines when, if we're going to do something, we have to do it by? Or is that open-ended?
Well, I think, again, if you are going to do anything that impacts any of our programming or staff, then you have time to do it. It also is a philosophy as a board. Do you want to address this as a board who, you know, or do you want to put it off onto a new board? I mean, those are the conversations that you guys get to have. We've been pretty- We've been pretty clear, I think, that we needed a December, we needed to have this done by next Thursday, if it would impact our staffing or anything that we would have to worry about programming and letting people know as we begin that process, so.
Can you talk more about that? Because I thought staffing didn't come out until March. I know the classes program at the high school has to be, but I thought that...
We start working on it January third. Well, actually, we've already started working on it. So registration is the main piece of that, right? If we, let's just say that we aren't going to whole, we aren't, no, pick, I want to pick something that people won't come back and say, what, you cut that? Let's say, underwater basket, yeah, underwater basket weaving, we aren't doing it anymore. If we would choose that, then students can't sign up for that during registration, they'd have to choose something else. Because if we have things that students are signing up for, and then we say, no, you can't have that, then that kind of creates havoc within that whole registration system.
So, I, on Thursdays, for example, Rachel's going to present new course offerings. Is that the only place that it would come up then, is new courses, or?
Well, I think if we did that...
If you reduced, if you, if you said, it's more about if you aren't going, if we're adding courses of some type, then, you know, those are in there, and it's more if you're reducing, because then if students sign up for that, and they've, you know, you know the registration process, right? I mean, kids kind of plan out their things, so if they plan out with their families, I'm going to do this and this, and then there's a change, then you have to go through that registration process.
So if we did that line item that says reduce high school programs to the level required by the state, is that...
Well, here's a, here's a...
But we didn't, we decided not to, we didn't?
Yeah, that's a concrete example. If, if the decision is made, for example, to cut instructional coaches, that's eight individuals I now need to know, have to go back into a classroom so that we can figure out who's going to get bumped out of classrooms. Do we have people that need to be placed on ULA? Do we need to release probationary? And that's what we start gathering.
And assume the best.
So that's why we need to know by December, because we start all of that in January, when we come back from winter break.
The other one is the staffing ratio at the secondary. If you would decide that you're going to increase that staffing ratio by one, that will have the same type of impact, because then what we'll try to do with secondary principals is give them a pretty good projection of what that ratio is going to be like, so that they can figure out, what am I not going to do the following year, because I'm going to have X amount less staff to do it with?
And so I'm not saying it wants us to happen, but if we had to push it back till January seventeenth, couldn't everything just get pushed back two weeks, and we could survive in that?
Not from my side of the house, and here's why, we have our timelines, we've been working with the union to move our postings and things up, so we can get out to the outside world and start recruiting for our positions in April, to the point of, didn't we do it in March? And so we literally start that process and doing all of that work.
And I'm not sure, you have a lot of information, I'm not sure, you know, what might change in a month, but...
Well, so, and I'll just say, we don't know what's going to happen in January. The new board could decide, we don't actually like what was cut, we want to revisit this or that, and so it could become an issue, so that's just...
I think another thing too, for me, is just, it would be, and I hear what you're saying, but it would be nice to wait, just, I don't know. We aren't going to really know what we're going to get from the state until June, May or June.
May is optimistic always.
Yeah, true.
Well, then you should just, then maybe what you need to do is say, you know, we're going to eat the fund balance up, we aren't going to make, because we have a new board coming on, we don't know what's happening with the legislation, because it, I would just encourage you to, I mean, I know it's hard to stick to the deadlines, right? But that is our life on this end, because we're, and you will have parents coming saying, what the heck, we're supposed to be registering our kids, and why not, and so...
I don't think we're looking at that much in terms of instructional, I mean, I think the big thing is the instructional coaches.
Well, I think it's class size, we have, we know.
I don't know, I mean, you, so maybe that is the question. If you, you know, I can't predict either, right? So we know that we aren't going to know about new money coming in, and that's really for moving forward, so, you know, I would argue that that, I think we all have a pretty good sense that we aren't going to be in a bad place. I mean, we aren't going to be at a zero and zero, or they aren't going to be coming, hopefully, to Kristen saying, you know, we're, you need to borrow money, because we're going to keep some of it. So that's a good thing, right? But I think the question really for you is, back to, you know, do we want to use the fund balance? Is this one of those times when we feel like there's too much unrest and too many things, and we're going to do that and use that to pay for it, and then figure out as we go forward, what we want to do differently with some of these things?
Or split the difference. George, make a couple cuts, and then take the rest as a, eat the rest for now.
George, go ahead.
Well, to Shelley's point, something may happen January seventeenth. You know, I hope that board would take a look and say, well, people have done things in the past, and we're not going to just turn it over. I would like to be part of the decision-making, that's why I'm here today, that's why I've put in the previous, almost eleven years now, so I can make these decisions. If a new board comes in and says, well, we need eight months to get up to speed and to pay attention, now you've really put it off. I think if decisions have to be made, I think you put that on the current board, that's why we're serving until whenever in January it takes over. I'm reading a book called The President's Club, which is the way the presidents interact with one another as they take over positions. And one of the first things that they talked about was how when Eisenhower took over, he had eight years to undo the great society, basically, that Roosevelt and Truman had built, and he said, I'm not going to do that, you did what you did for a good reason, I'm just going to move forward. And I would like to believe that the new board would do that, you know, say, you people have done what you did for a reason, our responsibility is to move forward, not go back and renegotiate everything that's been done in the past.
What I would like to see us do is to look at potential cut areas that we can all agree on, and do those. Now, we may not get the total sum, but at least move to the top of the list where we have common agreement. And if something like instructional coaches is on the bubble or close, okay, maybe that's next round or something, and, but at least we look at areas where we think we have seven oh, or six one, or five two, and say, okay. And my point is, doing that part of it, I think the sooner, the better. And if that's with this board or the next, let's start there, knowing darn well, and I think they have the right to do that, if a month from now, a new board wants to come in and ruffle that, and hopefully they don't.
Well, there are four of you sitting here right now, right? You'll still be there, so.
I just want to say something else, too. I'm kind of conscientious of what these conversations feel like out in the community, people talking, both staff, students, families, parents. And so I think the more clarity we can get, sort of as we go along, is better. I would like to see us make some initial sort of like statements of, these are, these are the top sort of five things we're going to really look at, maybe even say, we're going to actually do one or two of them at this time, and then revisit it again, maybe do it in stages. But I think it would be, might be helpful to, to say, these items that are currently on this list, whether they're green or orange, are absolutely no-gos, we're not touching them. You know, just to put some people at ease, so they don't have to keep be worrying as we go forward, you know? It's still on the chopping block, it's still possible. I mean, I just think it would be nice to be able to say, okay, well, we understand we have to find savings, but this area is for sure not going to be one of them at this time. I think it would be helpful.
Don said this before too, today, but I think once, once we decide or look for cuts, we need to also know that if some of those cuts are made, we're going to need to make more cuts, because parents are going to be looking for different places, because then it's going to produce certain programs. Without a doubt, we will.
I appreciate that, Don. I agree with that, because I do believe that people come here for gage, immersion, those different kinds of things. I also want us to be thoughtful of just all basic learning that happens in every, because that, from my perspective, I'll hear, I'll hear, you know, I'll have a few parents call me about gage or about immersion, but the thing where, when I first came and talked to parents from charter, private, and our current schools, was that we weren't serving kids everyday needs with basic math and reading. So I understand, I agree with that. It's your choice what you want to do, we're just here to sort of...
Right, and so I think we need to kind of get a little clarity around which of those four. So where I'm at is, I'd really like to get close to balancing, I know we might not hit it, but we already kicked it down the road this year.
So do you want?
Well, I, you know, I guess, I guess, yeah, Director Stinn and I were just kind of chatting there. I, what would help me personally is looking at, and, you know, we know that one option is to do nothing and just go into the, just utilize the fund balance a hundred percent. For me, I'd like to look at a little bit of both, possibly, you know, I don't like going into reserves, at the same time, the reserves are there for a purpose. So I'd like to see how that looks. And, you know, knowing that our outlook looks okay, but we still have to balance our books, so, that's what we're here for. And I really am not interested in micromanaging the situation at all, I, we are not those experts, so that's my O two on that one.
Well, let's take Mike's suggestion, go through if there's any agreements we can come to on that list.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we start, somebody keep track of the money, and when we get to wherever we stop?
Sure.
We're there.
Well, I would, I would start with the one that we have, is, it sounds like we're fairly comfortable with two hundred and fifty thousand at the professional development and some savings in, was it curriculum?
Can somebody keep track?
So a total of five hundred thousand between professional development and curriculum.
Is also your recommendation that you feel comfortable with? I just want to make sure that that's accurate.
I can make adjustments to how we're doing things and make it work if we do that.
Okay.
So, over, my caveat is, remember, my caveat was that, but don't take the three hundred and forty-eight thousand of instructional coaching out of PD and things like that.
Well, we're just doing this one for now.
Yeah, just start, yep. So, we're in agreement on the five hundred?
I am agreement, you know, if you're not going to get into the instructional coaching discussion, I am agreement on the five hundred thousand.
All right. All right, Mike.
The second one is memberships, contracts, restructure, et cetera. I think it says estimate maximum is a hundred and fifty, minimum is seventy-five?
I'm pretty comfortable with seventy-five.
Does that do away with the payment of the one ACT, because that one...
Yes, it does.
So that...
So that's like forty thousand, yep. So if you decide not to, because you had a lot of conversation that you probably all remember, probably don't need to go through again, if you feel as a board that you want to keep that and pay for that for families, then that's a forty thousand dollar price tag. So instead of seventy-five, it'd be thirty-five.
So thirty-five, just as a quick reminder, would be getting rid of what?
Inspire.
Some of the Inspire?
It would be getting rid of some of the ACT Inspire, and then it would be, what was the other one on there? It'd be between ACT Inspire and the Fast Bridge, we would make adjustments, the grade levels, because you pay per seat on those, and so we would reduce the seats to get us down to that remaining thirty-five thousand.
And just for the record, the price tag of the, of an ACT test is sixty...
Sixty-one fifty, roughly.
And we pay half of that right now?
Oh, we pay all of it, we pay all of it right now.
Okay, so what I'm putting in that column is thirty-five thousand?
If that's what you're at.
Okay, and we wouldn't be touching the cost of the ACT?
If, with thirty-five, we would not be touching the cost of the, of the ACT.
Okay, I'm in favor of the whole seventy-five, just if I can offer that.
So then you're saying we're going to charge people sixty dollars?
Yeah, my granddaughter got charged in New Richmond, they make them pay. I don't know why, you know, or, I would say, are mostly affluent district, we're paying for the ACT test, we do have an angel fund that picks it up.
I think that's an important part, the angel fund.
But I think a lot of people wouldn't use that.
Well, but that's their option, that's their option.
Isn't the state requiring us to give that to every student?
Yes, but not pay.
So we have to, we have to offer ACT. So that's the requirement.
Okay.
For one year, the state stepped in and paid it, so I'm not sure, those of you with older kids, well, George, many districts that I'm aware of, the families do pay for that ACT. But I think what happened is then, when the state said, well, we're going to pay for it one year, then it leaves the district back, all right, now our families haven't paid for a year, do we continue to pay it? Or since the state said, no, we aren't going to any more, then it does go back to families. So districts do it all different ways.
Well, and I think what's important here is to put out, if you're going to charge now, you charge now, but you also put out the information on the angel fund.
What about AP tests? Do they pay the total amount of that, or are we supplementing that as well?
That's a charge.
They've always paid that, though.
They pay the full amount.
Well, and they stand the game financially if they do well in the exam.
Because you don't have to pay for credits.
I would like to keep it at thirty-five for now, and just see where we land, if that's okay. I hear George...
I think it's an equity issue, I really do.
I'm with George, I'm with seventy-five.
I would be okay with like a ten dollar fee for taking the ACT, or something like that, or pay half of it, but I, that sixty dollars is a lot.
I mean, it is a lot.
And then, if you have families that are struggling financially, and...
That might go.
And we want to encourage their kids to be college and career-ready, then we're discouraging them by saying, we just can't afford this sixty dollar test.
Can we just see where this goes, is that...
Shelley, where are you?
I'm kind of in the middle.
Don? Well, let's leave it at thirty-five, if that's the case, at this point. If we find that we've got to go back and look for more, we come back to this one.
Yeah, I think we should cover the cost of the ACT, and, well, we're going to look at savings in the Fast Bridge, and we're going to look at savings in that Inspire, I don't think we need to give that quite so many times, once or twice, or not every three, every, every year for three years or something.
That'd be probably something that that team should look at.
Right, right.
Instead of one person determining that.
No, 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 I'm just saying, that's what I'm interested in, finding efficiencies in that, in that, yeah, whatever that looks like.
Thirty-five, thirty-five, yeah. Move on, admin, support staff.
Thanks, admin.
Yeah, I'm in favor of two hundred thousand.
I am as well.
I'd say make it two fifty.
Shelley?
I'd be fine with that.
Two fifty or two hundred?
Two fifty.
Two twenty-five, do I hear a one strike?
I mean, we can start at the two, but we're going to have to find more.
Let's start at the two, yep.
For now, it's two, okay?
Yeah, yep.
And we might come back to it. We could come back to that.
Operations and facilities, that was increasing, remember that, we said you do have to look at that second group, but also remember that that's a couple of dollars per group, it's not a couple of dollars per child. So if you have a Boy Scout group coming in, and you can speak to this part...
No, this is operations.
Increase per...
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm, yep, you're right, I'm a line ahead, yes. So this is, the conversation at the time was if we could avoid VAA or Boy Scouts, that's where honestly, the vast, vast, vast majority of our revenue is, if you don't include that group, you may as well not entertain this item.
And what is the increase again, per group?
It's five dollars an hour.
Okay.
In facility rental.
And is that usually what, like VAA basketball, they rent it for one hour?
Or whatever, they'll block it for ages, so it's not, you know what I mean? They'll say, we rented a couple hours a night, and then they'll scatter their teams throughout there.
Does this also include, like, this weekend, there was a basketball tournament at the high school, is that part of that?
Um, you know, I don't, with, that was sixth grade boys, and it was a Wisconsin traveling tournament, I think it is also our traveling teams.
See, they're making twenty to thirty thousand dollars for a weekend. I think to charge a few dollars extra to use the place and only make nineteen thousand, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
So forty-eight thousand you're fine with?
Yeah, I'm fine with forty-eight thousand.
All right. I am as well, Don.
So, just so I understand, the price, if we approve this one, the price for the local VAA basketball team?
Five dollars an hour.
It would increase, what is it now?
Every time you use it...
Probably give me, if you give me a second, I can pull it up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much more is it than if it's five dollars?
Over, so times twenty times, we probably use the gym's per season.
Right, so then it's another five bucks.
But if it's, if it's a hundred bucks now, that's double the price, if it's, you know what I mean?
No, no, just five dollars more an hour, over what we're paying now.
That's what I'm trying to get, I don't have an idea of how much they pay now. That's what I'm trying to get. I don't have an idea of how much they pay now.
So if, let's go this way, and it depends, honestly, I'm just pulling the high school gym because we have it spread across all of the gyms. If you were to look at, well, it's divided by number of participants, the hours. Again, increasing $5 per hour, it's VAA wrestling, cheerleading, basketball, the traveling programs, SAGEO, which is the Junior Olympic Volleyball, the Baseball Association, St. Grace Soccer Club, those are kind of your users. When you look at how many hours, and it really varies by group, like I look at VAA basketball, and they rent the high school gym for 200 hours.
But I've been asking, how much do they pay now?
Well, they're all different. Like, that's what she's trying to say, the-
Let me go up, let me go up, let me see if I can-
Per hour. Yeah, how much more is $5? Is that double the price? Is that a fraction of the price? How much big of a difference is that?
Well, I think what it would do, like for my son, probably increase our fees by 10 bucks. That's probably what it would end up being. So is this for all spaces or just the gym spaces?
It's for, it would be for all spaces.
So there's a fee schedule? You can find it online?
Yeah.
And it depends by what type of group you are, and that goes to like nonprofit status or something?
So assume group two, Carissa.
In group two?
Yeah.
Okay, so for the gym at the middle school, it's $33 currently. But then they have a different price for each other's space. So the wrestling gym is $14, the cafeteria is $18.
What's the high school? Just go high school.
High school, gym, high school, $24.
So it would go up to 29.
So it's a pretty big increase, actually.
Yeah, it's a big jumper. Only, it only makes us 48,000. So in terms of the big scheme of things, that's nickel and diming our community, and we want to support these activities and programs that are good for our kids. I don't know. Like, you've got to look at it from both different directions, because in terms of how much does it impact our budget and how much does it impact theirs?
And I get that there was a comment or something about families, but when we're talking about kids in classrooms and stuff, and now we're trying to weigh that against facility usage, not just being an employee, but being a resident of the district. To me, $5 on the facility thing versus the huge conversation we have and struggle with, we have with classroom stuff, I mean-
I don't know, it's hard, because back to your, everybody is important. All of this is important for our kids too, right? So it does impact, if it's going to impact a family from a child participating in an activity, which we know has shown that they're best if they can participate, I think it's just the threshold that we have to talk about. It's just going to knock down our kids.
My sandbox is the educational program and part of that, and this is beyond-
Go to them and have them vote for a levy in just a few years.
Let's do this. Either give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I'm up.
I'm down. I did want to say this, though, for the idea of these tournaments, like, is it, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I got you, sir. What are you saying, with the tournaments?
There's group two, one, group two, group three, then outside of district, like a, like a totally separate. That, that group, if they're coming in and they're using our facilities to make money, if they're making $30,000 on an event, that one I don't have a problem with, but I don't know what the opportunity is.
Okay, so can we go half that? I know it's only 24,000 then, but-
Any idea when we've increased it?
Can we just put this one on hold and see where we get?
We'll put a question mark there.
Let's leave it in as a possibility.
Any idea when the last time we increased it? PAC. PAC is, we actually, I shouldn't say raise, the PAC, with the addition of the PAC, we established rates for everything.
Okay, okay. So there were rates before that too, but we established new rates at that time.
For now, I put a question mark.
Question mark on 48.
All right, cleaning supplies. Kristen, make this one easier.
Yeah, we can do this.
Okay. Do that one.
Okay, ALC we passed over.
And everybody's still in agreement with that, right?
Increase 912 staffing ratio by one at the high school?
I'm opposed to this. Our class sizes are already too big.
I oppose as well.
I'm in favor.
Don?
Increase class sizes at the high school?
By one.
Can I clarify? It doesn't necessarily mean increase class sizes at the high school. You're staffing FTE. So you're giving the principals the ability to try to figure out how to do it. So it doesn't necessarily mean a class size increase across the high school. Just to clarify.
Well, would this one result in reduction in staff?
Seven, 12.
The only way it saves us money is if they do actually reduce staff somehow.
Sure.
But the class sizes won't cross, like all English classes won't go up by one kid. Doesn't mean that. Well, that's, I mean, to me, that's where the rubber hits the rug.
It's always ends up coming back.
Well, I got a fight, because I know we're going to get to music and I'm still with it.
You better watch the music.
All right, so-
Also, that's seven, it's 712.
So let's do, on the credit reductions, let's go a thumbs up or a thumbs down, okay? If you're in favor of that, put a thumbs up.
Well, can I just, before we go, I did have a meeting with somebody last week who said, who's a high school teacher, who said, and I know they're not all going to say the same thing, but they made a good point by saying, if something has to be cut, I would rather have an extra kid in all my classes than have elementary cut, or even middle school have higher class size. So it just is the perspective of some, at least. I don't know how far reaching it is.
I can remember saying that very statement at a meeting with Kathleen Macy. I mean, I, to me, if we're going to, if we're going to stay away from K6 or pre-K6, telling principals at 7 through 12 that the ratio's going up by one, and I don't know what that's going to equal, you probably have it on the top of your head, but let's say it means two less staff members at the high school. Three less staff members at the high school. So somebody used before 160 FTE that are there, and now we're down three. What's that going to do to every class that we offer?
Agree. I'm to the point, bring English into it. This is not to say that every English class that's at, say, 40 kids or whatever the number, is going to increase. This is giving the power to the principal to adjust accordingly.
And it's all FTE. It's not just instructional.
So is that roughly two, three teachers?
300,000 roughly.
No, no, three teaching decision?
Three to four, three to four.
Well, with salaries, oh, because we use a-
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
But if you do this, it says in the notes, in place of credit reduction.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember we talked about that last time, that credit reduction doesn't really get you anything in?
Right. This is what the principal's kind of requested.
I just know that we have some of the highest class sizes in the state right now. So if we cut at any level, we're just going to make that worse. And there's a whole heck of a lot of research to show that smaller class sizes is associated with improved academic achievement, success.
There's a whole lot to say.
I know, it's a whole set of words, but it is a big component.
Okay, how many yeses, how many yeses do we have?
I'm a no.
Yes.
Well, I'd go a no as well.
So what'd you come up with?
Four, two.
Yeah, okay.
Four, two.
So is that a-
That's a yes.
That's 912, right?
Yep.
712.
712, you did both of them?
So there's two lines in here. I only did one.
Yeah, we've got the 150, 78.
The next one is seven and eight. They're two separate.
Oh, I have them all as one, as mine.
So I know it supports that one.
It's two separate lines.
And the next one is, as you said, 78, and it's 150,800.
And I say no on that.
Now, that just, that's about a 1.4 teacher at 150, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Basically, a three quarters FTE.
But these are, remember, it's just-
Okay, so is this one going to be two, four reverse?
What are you guys doing over there?
I'm thumbs down. Like, I don't want to cut staff.
Well, then it's going to be a two, four.
Up next to our kids. We said we were going to stay away from the kids.
Okay, so this one is a no, and I get a two, four, any others?
I haven't weighed in yet on that one, but-
Okay, you can make it a three, three, Jen.
Can you hold on one second?
I got it.
Okay, just want to make sure we're getting it accurate from what we're discussing here.
So this one bothers me as well, is, if you talk to the, I go back to, middle school is, it's a crucial time. It's concerning for me. I have to go, I have to go thumbs down on this with a question mark, I guess.
Okay, so it is a two, four, am I correct?
I guess.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes or no?
No.
No. So two yeses and four nos.
I'm not opposed to going back to it.
Then the white one will skip because that, it just doesn't work. And then you're down to the athletic participation fees covered, though, that was the long conversation we had with Ricky Michael. You know, I think somebody shared this impacts kids directly. That probably should have been a conversation before we sent Ricky out to do all this work with our coaches and our activities, folks and that kind of thing. What he did share, though, was their recommendation about what they felt was least impactful. So whether you do it or not is fine. I just think, looking forward, moving, going forward, if we had known that, we, you know-
Well, we spent almost an hour. The productive part of that, I think we learned a lot, too.
Thumbs up or down?
Well, my thumb is up because it came as a recommendation, but it was for 65,000 because I was not in favor of number four, number 10, or number 12. So to take the whole thing and throw it in or throw it out, and I don't even remember, one of them was that mileage for the athletic director, which I thought was a ridiculous one, but I don't remember what the other two were, but it was number four, 10, and 12, I think is what I sent to you.
Could we just say, instead of, could we just say, because, you know, the question of governance versus management, could we just say, let's have him cut 35,000 or 25,000 from his budget?
Well, I'd love to, I'd love to say it that way. 65,000, and you make the decision. 500,000, you make the decision, however we're going to do that.
Right, I mean, that's kind of what I'm making on my heart.
I'm trying to go, what's your number, 500,000?
65,000.
He said 70, I say, let's-
Sarah says 200.
No, I go like, I say zero.
65 was the number that you kind of agreed on at the time, based on that list.
His, his list, if we did all of them, was like 82,000 or something like that.
Yeah, then you talked about some items you wanted pulled off, and that totaled to 65, which is the number George is averaging.
I don't want any.
Thumbs up or down on the 65?
I go no, so I think it's three and threes.
I say no.
Wait, Don just-
Don?
Where's Don at?
So it's 65?
Yep.
And four, two, because Sarah and I have both no, is that accurate?
Yeah. Okay. Annette has already said and is planning on that 170,000 for middle school programming. Just a caveat to remember that that can't be long term, because that will impact her, she's going to have to pull out of her savings for that, so she'll be able to do that for a year or two, but then we'll have to figure out how to either, then she'll have to increase fees, we'll have to figure out how to pay for it, because it'll run down her fund balance in four years, so. And she's also going to be coming to you about, you know, we have 15 unfilled positions for early, for-
Adventure.
Adventure club, where our families want people hired. She's going to need to do something salary-wise for that. So she can do that for now, and then we could look, you could look at what that looks like. She's picking up the cost for that.
Right, so I'm a no on that for that reason. I, because I feel like, one, it's short term, two, because I was at CAC, the Education Advisory Committee meeting, and I, the sense I got even from the advisory is that they don't want to just dip into the fund balance, and especially if we can't sustain it there, and I don't want to see increase, what's going to end up happening is increase fees to our families there, so I don't.
George, what's your feeling? How does this affect the middle school athletic programs?
Well, it'll change it. It's not good for that, but we've gone, we've started down that road with football, so I think it's just, it's going to be a trickle down anyhow.
What always scares me, if you're going to get kids involved in athletics, most programs, this is where you do it, is in middle school years.
Sarah, can we keep that at a question mark for now?
Well, why don't we do, just see where everybody's at?
I don't know where I'm at with that.
Okay, question mark.
I think if it's not sustainable, that's not a good choice. And also, I think that I want to commend Annette Solomon for being an incredibly good steward of our finances. She always has a very clean budget. It's always right on the nose. It's great. It's something we can rely on. And then we just say, well, we're just going to go take this out of her budget. I don't know.
But I want to push back on that a little bit. I think they've got a very, very healthy budget, and I think it's up to about 21% of the, and to me, keeping a 21% fund balance is not right when we know we're charging parents and we're charging kids for programming. But I'm not on the advisory, so I don't-
And they would recognize that. Part of the reason it got to that is because they really didn't know with the PAC what was going to happen. So they really built in their budgets so they'd have space for the PAC.
I think that goes to those 15 positions. If we had those in place, that would be lower. So I don't think, it sounds like people are in favor of that, so should we move on?
Yes. This one, reduce board expenses, $21,000. Where's the 21, is that our salaries?
I don't, no, I don't think it was. I think, were you and George going to, there was a combination, travel memberships, consulting. We didn't do anything with that. I thought I heard that you guys were going to 916 and EMT to gather information.
I've got it, and I think I brought it with me. If you want to see what the salaries are district-wise, I have-
I don't think this is salaries. Salaries is down, you didn't vote for salaries. This is, this had stickers because it was looking at your travel. That must be reimbursement for travel. Memberships would be AMSD, C, AMSD, consulting, I'm sure, you know, marrying, Secconi, other things that have happened in the past, that you would just reduce that budget by 21,000.
Right, which, yeah, a couple of years ago, the food budget was like $16.72, and then just last year, it was like 4,000. And I'm like, where did all that? I don't even know where that came from. So I think we can save $4,000. We can save $4,000 in the food budget, or maybe 2,000, I don't know.
All staff, welcome back.
Okay, so that must have been somewhere else.
We used to have donations for that, and they don't want to pay.
Okay.
And then like Food Today, things like that. So you want to keep some food budget in there. I don't have it. Do you have any idea what mileage reimbursement totals would be?
Right now, probably about 1,000, to date. 750 to 1,000 would be my guess.
I'm probably the biggest user of that, because I go to ESCD and I go to the legislature a fair amount of time, and I go to C.
Well, I'm not sure how we go about doing this, but I mean, I think it's reasonable. We could cut, how much does it say on here?
21,000.
Which I think that would cut some of our memberships, and that would take a bigger conversation.
Yeah.
Well, I think one that I don't want to see us do is cut memberships.
I agree.
And maybe we can't cut food.
So, so C is in this, as well as AMSD and C included in this 21K?
Probably MSBA too, isn't it?
And MSBA.
So isn't C like 10K? Well, there's certain memberships you need. You need the State High School League. I mean, those are, I mean, it's all part of the big budget.
But all those aren't in the- High School League is no charge. You need to watch that video and pass the resolution. There is a, AMSD, MSBA, and Schools for Equity and Education charge per student. They have a rate that they charge per student, and it is-
I think C is one and a half.
Yeah, it's way over 21,000 for all of them together.
So our dues and memberships have, are right around 35, 35,000 for all the dues and memberships. And the big thing that's really buried a lot is consulting fees, and under that category is all of our legal services. And that has been all over the place. So I'm not sure if there's some way to make any savings in legal services, but-
Yeah, but in this case, is that what's being proposed with the 21,000?
It's your, we aren't proposing anything. I think we just, when we look at the budget, you know, just like all of us are going to have to do, right? We're going to have to go back and figure out. So maybe you want to say, we'll do 21, we're going to go back and figure it out. We're not going to have consulting. We're going to take some off of each of the places. I mean, it's for you to decide. It's not, we don't have a recommendation. Other than, we have talked to you before. I know it's a hard thing, but as much as I value both C and AMSD, that's a $10,000 line item for something where they both generally do the same services, and I, from my perspective- And I, from my perspective, yeah, you know, I, I think it's a overlap of services, great people doing great work at both of them. I just don't know when you're trying to cut budgets, if you need both of them. I think you've had that conversation before, because when I first came, we weren't C, we were AMSD, and, you know, they're both very helpful. It's not that anyone is more helpful than the other. I think for our needs, AMSD, probably the lobbying piece there is maybe a little bit stronger, but that's just my perception.
I would say that's gonna be a much longer conversation again, so we, we put a question there for now.
Question on what, so we're not doing anything with the twenty-one, we're thumbs up, are we?
Maybe we could just say, we could try to cut five thousand out of the budget instead of twenty-one thousand.
What, if we decided, what effect would it have if we cut food? Question would be, how much food are we talking about?
You know, I, I'm not sure in the big picture things that it's really gonna make that big a difference. I go on to your, your next ones, and you can.
I'd love to.
All right, let's, we're gonna move on. If it's okay.
Kristin is going to, has another thing she has to attend, so can we talk about fee pay really quickly before she, she needs to be out of here, actually, five minutes ago? Can we, um, where is fee pay?
If that is the last blue.
Last, green, blue. Do you want to move ahead with user fee pay? Do you have questions for her about what that might look like? She's put over on the side that, you know, there's, most people have had, our experience, if you use a processing fee and you pay by credit card, that you have some kind of charge for being able to do that.
Wouldn't Community Ed pick up their own fee for Community Ed?
Um, it's, this is the fee to use, this is what gets transferred on to the parents. So, I go on and I pay, you know, for the kids to do their activities, and then there's a, there's a service fee that's attached that credit card companies get. The district has, since fee pay has been in place, picked up that service fee. What this would say is, we're no longer picking up the service fee to use the credit card.
Which is the same thing if you get twins tickets, or you violate missed tickets, or something like that.
Thumbs up or down?
Thumbs up?
Uh, hesitant.
All right, got it?
Don, you and Sarah.
Yeah, he added up.
Okay, Sarah? No? It's a five, one, then. Okay, uh, no, that's all right. Supplying materials, do you wanna leave that there or not?
We have one more for Kristin that, um, what did we label it on? You're looking at, I think, the old, are you on the last one? I don't think you're, it's this one, Kristin, that we talked about the, um, oh, 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 yeah, line twenty. Removing the building level allocation, we talked about that, where for one year, we wouldn't give principals, uh, right now, they have kind of a fund where if they wanna do something to improve their building, they can. What we do is not.
It's operating capital. So, essentially, what happens is principals that, and this actually goes to supplies as well, but that's a different thing as far as freezing them, as opposed to giving a two percent increase. We also do building level capital. Anything big, obviously, facilities and whatever covers, but principals are allocated, and in some district-wide, it's approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, of which they can do different capital-related things. Essentially, what this would do, and I, the board members who have been on for a substantial period of time would know, what we would do then, because it's op cap, it's restricted, but we would charge a body to operating capital, like probably one of our technology people, instead of their salary being paid out of the general fund. We'd say they're, they're supporting devices that are greater than a year length, and therefore, they can qualify as operating capital. So, it's essentially taking the money out of the principal's ability to do capital stuff in their building, and we would charge a person who's currently allocated to the general fund to capital. Again, it's a one-time deal, we can still do it.
Are we being given the option, I looked at that, um, we were being given the option of either ten thousand dollars or twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty, is that the?
That's supplies. So, that's saying, what the supply one is, is the ten thousand is, everybody stays, whatever they have in their supply allocation this year.
Right.
Just rolls forward. That's the, we're not gonna give a two percent increase, like the finance, or the budgeting committee says, every year, we're just gonna assume two percent increase. You're going to say, nope, what we gave today, we're giving tomorrow.
Okay.
The greater dollar amount says, not, okay, what we gave today, we're not giving tomorrow, we're actually taking away.
So, is the ten K rolled into that twenty-four then?
No.
Okay, got it.
Well, it would, well, the ten K says that's, it's already in the budget, the twenty-four backs that off, and then backs off.
Okay.
So, ten should be easy.
Okay, thumbs up or down?
Ten, nobody knows about, cause they haven't felt it yet.
Ten?
So, are you gonna ask us about twenty-four then?
I wouldn't.
Are we gonna thumb up or down?
She wouldn't, did you hear?
Okay, so if you wouldn't, and if I vote for ten, I can't vote for twenty-four?
Well, or are we talking?
Or you can, you can suggest a vote on twenty-four.
Do you wanna vote on twenty-four?
It would actually be probably more like fourteen, because it's.
Wait, it's a fourteen thousand dollar difference.
Right.
That's why I'm saying, why would we vote for ten?
Well, isn't it a thirty-four thousand?
Let me ask you this, and may, and maybe it's, I'd, I'd ask you to approach it a different way. Are you voting to hold, or are you voting to reduce?
Right.
Fourteen reduces.
Ten holds.
Correct, ten holds. Fourteen reduces. Both would have meant, you had the increase, so it's, you're double counting, that's why I say, it would be a twenty-four total, but you don't get, you don't get thirty-four. You either get twenty-four, or you get ten.
Right, no, I understand it, yep, yep, okay.
Although, I would say.
So, who is this impacting then? Who that, who?
The discretion of the principal.
Okay, but look at this.
Building supply budgets.
Going back to the.
Okay, so is this separate from the thing you just were talking about?
Yeah, that's capital.
Okay, we get capital.
So, they'll still have what they have this year for their supplies, for their paper and their paint, they'll have the same.
Oh, really?
Amount of this year, we just won't increase it.
And that costs ten thousand?
It'll save us ten thousand.
Correct, they don't know it's there right now, it's built into the budget.
What I'm trying to get is, if we do the twenty-four thousand.
All right, George, are you gonna propose your twenty-four?
You get nothing?
Can I just go back to?
What they get is, either they get the same, if they got ten thousand this year, they get ten thousand next year, or next year, if you reduce it down, they'd get ninety-five hundred instead of ten next year. They're still gonna get it, it's just gonna be reduced slightly.
Shelly has a principal recommendation.
The principal sheet, so twelve of them say highly consider or consider, and three say we belong for the reduction. So, they're saying we could live with the reduction.
Majority can live with the reduction.
So, that'd be the twenty-four.
Okay, let's do the twenty-four.
All right, all those in favor? Thumbs up.
I'm gonna say no to this one.
Converging. So, that's a six-oh.
We just add it on there to something.
Wait, did we, did we get the total so far, or is she walking around with the total?
Well, we're, I'm taking, I'm taking it as we also.
We're at one point.
One point four.
So, was this other, the capital thing with the principal's capital that was a hundred and twenty-five? What was the thing you started to talk about?
That's what she was talking about.
So, it's a different, it's a different thing, so as we talk, it's not on your sheet, but what, what Kristin was trying to explain is, it's the whole, it was originally on a sheet as a, as a switch between, switching tech from general fund to tech. It's essentially that, what Kristin is suggesting, and I'm hoping I get this right, is that she said we could remove the building level allocation of that capital dollars, that then, at the district level, she could shift money to, out of the general fund from the capital fund to pay for tech support positions. So, it would be, long and short, it would be, doing this would be a reduction of a hundred and twenty-five thousand to the general fund.
Yeah, they're gonna redo it.
And it's also, we're doing the same thing, how it's saving.
Different bucket, different bucket.
It, it's saving you in the general fund, but it's costing you more in operating, so we are, we won't be able to do things.
Oh, it's a capital fund. Okay, cause tech goes both ways, tech is the one thing that can go both ways.
We can do that for you, so.
So, that's what she was saying, it's a one-year thing, if we wanna do that for sure, then that would get, I mean, it would add a hundred, it'll be a way for us to add a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I would support that.
That's huge.
And again, you'd have to add that in, hand-enter that in, and I would enter it in as.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand, it would basically be taking the tech expenses at the building level and pulling it from capital, district-wide capital funds, and operating capital funds instead. So, it's just taking out of a different bucket, and, and you're saving it out of the general fund, which is what we're trying to do.
It's a, it's a way for us to make an internal shift to reduce the spending in the general fund, which is what you're trying to do.
Okay, right.
All right, add that.
All those in favor?
Thumbs up or down?
I'm in favor of that.
This one's a six-oh.
So, now we're back to six-seven gate.
How, where, where are we at right now in terms of how much you'll?
It looks like one, one, did you add the last one?
No, the twenty-four, I'm not sure which line to put that on, is it down by the nine-twenty?
No, put it back where the ten, the ten doesn't count, if they're doing twenty-four. Twenty-four, yep. Okay, so we're at one point three-seven-six.
We're gonna take a quick five, five minutes.
Is it four, basically?
Basically, one point four, one, three, seven, six.
Hey, mine, mine's higher.
What is it, one point three-seven-six?
Okay, quick five minutes.
So, uh, we, I think we skipped over GT. I don't know, I can't remember if there are a couple of dots on that, or what, if you.
Well, we can try our thumbs up, thumbs down.
On, uh, programming, six-seven gate, is that what, you're, where you're at?
Yep, I think that's, we skipped over to Kristin, though.
So, thumb, uh, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Thumbs down.
All right, all right.
Easy one, it's easy.
Uh, I'm bored, we're gonna go back to, we've got fifty, okay, so then Bob's gonna share with you, we have a couple others that we talked about, that we came up with after, again, after our second one.
The first one is on, I know this wasn't popular, and I voted down, but we think we should bring it back up again, is this idea of the music staffing at the high school. Our, our lead conductors at the high school are staffed differently than the rest of the district. We just thought we should bring it back up, and if you voted down, that's fine, but it was, it would be a savings of roughly forty thousand dollars to do it that way, so.
Thumbs up or down?
Thumbs down.
Okay, all right, the next one.
Here's the reason why, can I just say this? Our music program is a pride and joy of this community and of this school district, right? And we have some amazing music staff, okay?
Don't disagree, Neil.
And it's drawing in students that otherwise might not choose to come here, right? We have competition.
We agree with you, we agree with you.
What's the thing we wanna sell, right?
We agree with you.
So, my kids are all in the music program, right? So, I'm just gonna put that out there, so it kills me to bring this up, but.
Bob, not anymore.
We spend plenty of our money on private lessons to keep them in the program, right?
No, thank you for bringing it in.
Here's, here's a question that I think needs to be on the table with us, but please understand that when we talk with our teacher group, there is, this creates a disparity in staffing with our elementary teachers. We have elementary teachers that are reporting, I can hardly get a breath in, because I'm going and going and going. And this isn't about what.
For music, you mean?
For music, our music staff. When, it's hard for a teacher, if I'm an elementary teacher, running with my head cut off, to know that my counterpart, because they are a high school conductor, teaches three out of six, when I'm running with my head cut off. So, that's why we're bringing this back.
But that's not exactly how it is.
That is how it is. I have the schedule.
I believe, I believe it is how it, I actually agree with you, but my argument is, everyone knows where I'm at with music, but this is a community, I mean, yes, that's accurate, Bob, but this is something that brings in elderly people, new, you know, this is a community program, it's not just for the kids. This is like something that draws everyone, so, you know, you know where I'm at, let's increase, you know, elementary.
Just explain, just explain it, right, Jason?
It will probably be something that comes up in negotiations that you will need to have more conversation about, because there is an inequity. We aren't arguing, we love our music programs and teachers, but that's an issue for some of them, and so it might be that between now and then.
Yeah.
You might wanna spend some time with our elementary music teachers and see what that looks like, and spend some time, and, and then figure out, and you know, that, we wanna make you aware of it. We feel like we need to, when we're looking at all programs, which is our job, so you know that there's that discrepancy, and then in the future, you can decide if you wanna.
Might be a conversation that some board members wanna have with some of the other secondary teachers who are not music, and see what they think about the ratios.
Shelly, you were gonna say something.
No more.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Was there a negative relating to what you're saying in terms of elementary school teachers? The fact that we've had the music program begins in fifth grade, and has for quite some time, as far as I'm aware, and then we took sixth grade and moved it up to the middle schools, right? Would it have, would it be reasonable to consider, in terms of, just in terms, not in terms of, I obviously, it was more expensive, but, but in terms of this schedule issue, if we went back to having two grades of music, so we started the music program in, say, fourth grade, then we would have music staff that would be covering both fourth and fifth grade in, in each building. Obviously, that's an increase in staffing, but would that make a difference in terms of how much running around they're doing, spending a little bit more time in one building?
I recall having almost the same conversation when we had fifth and sixth grade in elementary school.
George, and I were on board when it was changed to add a fifth grade.
Two groups, well, yeah, it changes it a little bit, cause they can do more in one building at a time.
Okay.
We'll look at that more, yeah, we're, yeah.
So, the last one that we, we put on there, that what is on the list at the bottom, and we brought it up, was this idea of removing the YCAP program, which is a hundred and seven thousand, cause it's one FDE to do it. I can give you both sides of that one, right? There are days where we don't have kids that utilize YCAP, that's just the way it is. We have other days, the last two weeks are an example, where we've had upwards of nine kids at a time in that YCAP program because of just what's going on. You could, you could argue either side of it, however, that said, it is, it's a program that lives off-site.
Tell a little bit more about the issue, what's YCAP?
So, it really is just your alternative to suspension. The idea behind YCAP is, when a student gets themselves into a situation where they were, where they would otherwise be suspended out of school, the principals will use, and assistant principals will use this program for part or all of that. So, I get into a fight at school, rather than getting sent home and being home alone, I might get sent to YCAP for a day, while my counterpart gets sent home, and then I get sent home the second day. So, it's a two-day, would've been two days of suspension, it's one, it eliminates me being out of school suspended for two days type thing, that's the use of it. I can also, also tell you that one of the downfalls is, it isn't a program that is appropriate K-12, right? It's not appropriate to send fourth, fifth graders over with eleventh and twelfth graders. So, it's only utilized primarily right now for our nine through twelve kids. We use it seldom, even with middle school, because it's developmentally.
So, if we said, okay, what happens?
We would have to work with the high school administration to figure out things like the more traditional, probably, in-school suspension, what does that, they would have to wrestle with that. You would see an increase, when we do the, what's called the DIRS report at the end of the year, that tells you, and even in your results policy, how many kids were dismissed, you, we would expect to see an increase in dismissals, right? Because if, if this is a, a space where we send students to, in lieu of suspension, those would typically then be suspendable things, and so.
So, in other words, bottom line is, more kids are gonna be suspended out of school, is what you're saying?
I, that's a fair assessment.
Unless, and, and you've always got a question of supervision, unless you had on-site some.
Unless you did, there's always gonna be incidents where you need to remove students from a building for a specific command of time, based on what happened, right?
Any idea, a tough question that I'm asking, but any idea how many students on average are being sent there who, who may otherwise be suspended, or are there other reasons why kids are being sent over there? Any, any idea on that?
Our latest data is, most of our kids are getting sent there for vaping, and for some type of insubordination at the high school. So, I, to that, I would say, it's a toss-up as to whether that's an effective thing, because I also know that what we're learning over the last two years, is from what I've been told, based on the specific kids, we're getting more repeat offenders, which tells me. It's not changing behavior, so, like I said. So, like I said, going in, in all fairness, it's a toss-up for me right now.
See, I can see on one hand that this makes it harder for APs, assistant principals, because they've gotta be the breaker of the tide, your kids coming home. That gets the attention of principals or of parents.
It does. I would say, here's the other thing I would add to that. If we, to do the program correctly as we're getting more and more mental health issues, it's really a program that you, you need to have more staff in there to, to really help with that restorative processing piece. So, for those reasons, I would put it on here at this point with all other things considered.
So can I just ask really quick, what, what is the cost? Is that a staff, is that one FTE?
It's one staff member, yep.
So one staff member is being paid full-time?
Correct.
It's currently at Oak Park, right next to the transition space.
Correct.
It used to be a part of ALC when it was in that lease space, right? Wasn't that, or where was it before?
At the high school.
Oh.
It sat on an office.
At one point it was at the county courthouse.
It was at the courthouse.
And then that was a contract we had with YSB, if I remember correctly.
It was part of a, yeah, it started as a collaborator.
Okay.
We, yeah, we teamed with other districts through YSB. So we, we paid, my, me and I paid some, we paid some, you know, people paid into that.
And are they still doing it, or did YSB stop doing that program?
No, that program's gone.
So these students would do what instead?
Well, it depends because here's what happens as a principal. If you know that you have this as an option, you might use it where you otherwise may not have used it.
Right.
Right?
Right.
You might've done something else, but it's one of those, it's hard to predict that because until it's there, you, you do other things.
Right, and what if, yeah, what if, um, if, I lost my train of thought. If we, if we didn't, so what is this staff person that we're paying that does YCAP? If there are no students on a particular day, what are they doing?
So right now Helen Brennan's over there.
Okay.
And so what she's done a great job this year is worked on building Schoology modules that are both related to content and to the social emotional piece, to try and, and get that. However, what I'm, what I'm understanding is happening is with nine kids in there at any one given time, it's, it's hard to, I mean, to meet the needs of those nine kids at one time, it's tough.
That would otherwise be spread out amongst the various assistant principals.
Could be, so...
But what I hear you say...
Transition too, doesn't it?
Yeah, they, they'll pull over to the transitions program if they need to, but couldn't speak specifics to that.
Yeah, but what, what I hear you saying, repeats are common.
It, this year and some of last year...
Because of the offense.
There's some repeats in there.
I think we should vote.
I think it's gonna come back to haunt us, but I think we should do it.
I don't know.
Don, do you wanna cast a vote for or against? Oh, I'm sorry.
He was, he was at thumbs up.
Thumbs up, so it went 4-3 or 4-2?
I'm a fan of restorative justice. I'm a fan of the idea that we, we try to find proactive ways to help kids do better. But it sounds like, what, if what you're saying is accurate, it sounds like this is really not that effective? Or we could find better ways?
I would say our plan for this program was to build it out into something bigger, but to do that is gonna cost more money.
Right.
So as it is, it's, it's again, it's one of these programs, it's bare bones right now. Its intent was really to be a spot for kids, so we didn't have to suspend them multiple days.
So that's a big, to Sarah's point, I wonder if going forward, in addition to the, some of the other discussions, we can have maybe a grander discussion on what we want out of that program, where it's at, where it's been, and what we want it to be possibly going forward.
And really, the reason that my recommendation was to put it back on there is this whole idea of that to whom at what cost. It's $107,000, I can't tell you that it's impacting 100 kids at any given time, and so the cost benefit is just that.
So we're at 1.5 right now?
Was that on or off? I'm sorry.
That was on.
What if we...
It may, it may turn out.
Wait, hold on, we were at 1.39.
Maybe. May not, the offenders...
1.0.
1483.
Oh, I have 1.5, what's going on?
Okay.
We're done.
We're...
Yep, that's it.
Well, that's it, that's our list. So we can read through, should we read through and just make sure we're all on the same page with that? And then move... So what did we decide with YCAP?
That was...
Oh, I thought I heard...
We already have thumbs up.
Oh.
So I have one...
Yeah, some.
I thought, yep.
Okay, I just didn't vote yet, so I thought nobody else did.
I'm glad you said that, Sarah, because I thought it was...
I can tell you this, it's 1483 with YCAP on the list.
1483 with YCAP on the list.
But I'm hearing some discrepancies. I was right before too. Let's make sure we're getting the same items that you had on your list.
Right, so we'll start up at the top.
So we've got curriculum PD for 500,000. Correct?
Yep.
All right, we've got restructuring assessments, reduced to 35,000. We've got department responsibilities, 200,000. The administration cut. Cleaning and maintenance for 75. Nine, 12 staffing ratio at 300?
That's 321, that's why...
Kathy caught me and said a better, more accurate number's probably gonna be 300.
Oh.
That's where my...
And did, did we decide no on the increased fees for facility rent?
Yeah, we're at with the 4EK.
The increased fees is a question we're committed to say that.
So it's a zero for now.
Okay.
The next one I have as is increasing at high school athletics for 65,000. The next one would be budget, freezing budget supplies, supply budgets, 24,000. Fee pay, 52,000. YCAP at 107,000. Building level allocations for the tech to general fund at 125. On my sheet gets 1.483 million.
And 1.484. Plus, eight plus...
Somebody rounded up.
Plus, um, the 107 for the, for the YCAP. Did you put that in?
Yeah, that was in there.
Oh, yeah.
This is in a Google Sheet that's tracking additions as it goes. And we'll recheck it, but...
But it's close enough.
We're at one, yeah.
Oh, wait, so, oh, hang on.
Okay, I have at least two of these that we left as a question mark, so maybe if we take a vote and see where we're at. As one was increase the fees for facility rental, and I think potentially we were talking about 48,000. So do we...
Yes, that was the total recoup of the amount.
I'm a thumbs up.
I'm a thumbs up.
So just remember that 48,000 is going to all of the different activities that are, you know, I don't know.
Good news in small chunks.
We have a lot of them. A lot of them, if they are traveling programs, it's just, somebody's profit is just going down a little bit. I mean, I see those weekend tournaments up there that they're making handle or fist, and we'd raise their fees.
But we're also, and I, I think I'm in support of it, we're also raising like VAA families and it'll be up for, and they don't really get profit.
So Shelley, your thumbs up?
Maybe.
I don't wanna pressure, okay, maybe. Jen?
There's no way, there's really no palatable way of going in the middle somewhere in that one?
Well, I mean, it's a pretty big, to me...
Sure, you can do maybe.
It's a pretty, it's like one-fifth increase, right? If it's 33 and we're going up five, that feels like a pretty big increase that it'd be. I'd be more comfortable going up less than that.
So if you went up four?
I have no idea how that's calculated.
Plus I...
Well, it'd be 20% less. So roughly you're talking, what, about 38?
Well, why don't you give a solid, why don't you give a, a new number? And then she can calculate how to get to that number, if that's what, if that's what you're going.
All right, what about 38 or 40?
I like 40.
All right, 40. 40, let's vote on that, thumbs up or down, 40K?
Okay, so what do we...
I'm still gonna vote now.
What do we got, a 5-1 on 40? And so that would get us over...
1.523.
Oh, it's so funny, I have 1.52.
But this is like a...
Oh, yeah, minus eight, minus eight.
Okay, so let's go down to the activities, athletics, and we're looking at potentially 170?
Yeah, I just...
Which one was that?
Yeah, I thought we said that was charged to community ed to pay for the...
I don't think we should do that.
Yeah, I agree, I thought we were at a, I didn't think, I thought we had a decision on that one, actually.
So that's a no?
You know, we're at 1.523. That's, we, we're, our goal was to try to get to 2.5. We're more than halfway. Could we just say this is phase one, we're gonna take up potential other cuts, say, in January?
You could.
Or is there anything on this list that we need to consider that would have staffing effect or whatever, you know, time?
Not that I see, I would just throw an observation in. We've, we've, as a board, you've made a decision to go after a ton of professional development and curriculum, right? We're a school district, ton of professional development and curriculum, and we're struggling with cutting out of our sports and stuff. So just an observation. I mean, that, so it's not good or bad, it's just, we're a school district and, and we're, we're struggling with some of these smaller things that aren't anywhere close to the classroom.
But I think we did just cut those, and we still have a 4% PD budget, right? So this is gonna decrease it to what? Right, isn't that what, we have to be at two, we're usually at four.
Yep, a million dollars is about 1%. It's 100 million, it's 100 million dollar budget.
And the curriculum side of things.
It's just, I'm just, just an observation.
Well, it's a good point because if we were a board of directors at 3M, how far would we be willing to cut professional development? I mean, what are we saying anytime we make a cut to professional development? We know that the biggest impact on student achievement is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. We're assuming that our 564 FTEs are awfully good right now, and they don't need as much professional development. That's the call that we're making.
Well, and I'm not saying don't continue.
And I would agree with that.
It's just, it, as I'm listening to the struggle with transferring the cost of athletics, the cost of fees to families, you've already said we're willing to cut a ton of money out of professional development and curriculum. So it's hard to hear the struggle to cut sports when we've, we've already kind of said...
So for example, you're, you're, is this alluding to the 170 athletic costs out of community as one of them?
Yeah, I mean, if I'm looking at it, we, and it's, they're all hard conversations, right? But as a group now, and you're the ones that vote, we've, we've agreed that, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a cut to professional development and curriculum.
Yeah.
Get it? But should we, if we're gonna do that, should we really have that difficult of time?
Right.
Looking at things not related to the classroom?
Well, we really did hedge on, on the curriculum and professional development.
And I think we're thinking of actual physical parents out-of-pocket fees, and I think that's kinda where the struggle is on, on some of that. But, you know, I'm with you, that's, I, I go back and forth on this 170 as well because it doesn't, doesn't deplete the program? I don't know, I, you know, I just, the program is still intact if it goes over to community ed, and that's 170K price, price point.
But that's not a sustainable option for community ed.
Right, it's not sustainable.
And one of my concerns there was because right now if they're in middle school sports and they're free to reduce lunch, it's covered, correct? They don't have to go to youth advantage unless, but in community ed, they would have to go through youth advantage, which I just think makes it harder for them to participate than if it's through middle school sports and then free to reduce and they just, it's just covered. So it's just, that and that it's not sustainable.
Well, it could be sustainable, but everybody's gonna be charged a little bit more for every course that anybody takes, whether it's adult ed or, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna result in community ed's gonna have to balance their budget or, you know, raise fees in order to accommodate part of that.
So that's 170,000 to our middle school families. I think that's significant. You know, that's the, whatever, the subsidy or whatever, so...
We made the decision to raise hockey to $450. I mean, that's our families.
It just, we, you talked about the ratio, the staffing ratio at the high school. It's just a point that I, and I will always be the one to argue for this side of it because it's, we're a learning organization first. We're, we're a classroom teacher organization first. It isn't diminish the impact of anything else, but it's just, it's as I'm, as I'm reading through this and seeing go through them, I'm seeing we've made decisions to cut on the classroom and the teacher side of it. Do we have the same level of appetite to make those types of cuts on the non-classroom, non-teacher side of it?
I think what you're not, I think the, the thing that we're trying to say here, we're trying to think about what this looks like and from the perspective of a parent or a, a person who's like a soccer coach or a kid's basketball coach. You know, if the fees go up, then a letter's gonna go out saying, you know, when you sign up for this course, this activity this year, it's gonna be more expensive because our fees for the use of the space has gone up. And every time, and oh, every time you go in and put food money in your kid's account, that's gonna be an extra charge there now because we decided to do that too. And in the very near future, we're gonna start talking about levy. We wanna get a levy to pass. Every single thing we do leading up from between now and then is gonna have possibly, maybe a small, maybe a big impact on whether or not people support giving an increase in, or, you know, adding on to the levy.
I think part of it is perspective, right? I mean, our jobs are on learning, this is a learning organization, right? And so I totally get your wanting the levy. Where I get concerned is when we pull the professional development and the pieces for our teachers, we are bound by the state to be able to deliver this learning for our kids, right? I mean, that is the number one thing. Having all of the extras is amazing and great, and, you know, I mean, that's one of the reasons that, you know, the AAA with athletics and the arts and activities is awesome. What it looks like for some parents, though, who are not happy with our reading results or that their kids aren't reading it, then it looks like, all right, we're taking away the support from our teachers who are in the classroom every day helping our kids at the expense of some of these other things. Now, I get that some people don't, I had one of my students when I was a teacher, she was sure that both of her kids were going to be hockey stars, and she said, "I don't care if they learn to read or not, because they're gonna go and have hockey scholarships." But our main thing that we have to keep pushing and will continue to push, and it's fine for you to push back, is that when we look at these, there's perception on both, both places. And you are elected to try, figure out what the community wants, just know that, you know, there is that, there's always that friction, right? All right, we're doing this and we're making some of these decisions, but that, that professional support for our teachers is, just will always be a concern that you'll hear from us, so...
And you need advocacy.
And you need advocacy, and just to your, to respond, Sarah, again, I don't just work here. I have the perspective of living here and having three kids in our system, to which I do pay these fees for all this as well. And so I bring that kind of triangulation of all that perspective. I get it, and I have to vote just like everybody else.
I think part of it, though, and I think George hit on it, is our staff is paid extremely well. Now, one of the reasons for that is they're very experienced and they bring a lot of advanced degrees. Now, I think that makes them better. So I'm saying, does that result in less need for professional development? Part of it goes to how effective do you think professional development is? And, and you argued for a long time, and made a strong case for, look, it's going to be more effective and more sustaining if we have instructional coaches. And at least on this round, we left that part of it untouched. And, and so I would argue what we ended up doing was hedging. Maybe that really in essence got at what Don was proposing earlier, some cuts and some not.
I don't think it's that, you know, and I, I appreciate this difficult conversation. I just, I look at the, we have to do, we have to make some decisions somewhere in the athletics. I, you know, I, I have to agree here that it's not like it's that, there's not that much money in there compared to the hefty sum we have to try to hit. So I guess I, I think we're close, and I just wonder if we can't, you know, what our options are going forward. We got almost 1.0. options are going forward, we got almost 1.5 or around 1.5, and consider either the fund balance, which I don't like, or, you know, what our options are if we stay at this 1.5 for now. I'm just...
So should we bring, do we plan on, I think that's kind of a good question.
Yeah, it would, it would seem to me we're at this 1.523 for now.
Yeah, and I think that for now is important.
Yeah, and I think we bring that forward. I think what, what the board collectively has to ponder then, that's a first step. And I think we bring it before and we vote on it. I would argue that maybe another look 30 days from now or so, or a look with the board, and we see, if we bring another list, but that other list would have very limited, if any, staff impacts.
Well, and I think back to your first question, I think Sarah's question too, on the stuff that we have here, if we're, if you're able to make the decision on the programming things that are here, that answers that, when do we have to have this done by? So to that first round, this is enough for us to, okay, we know where we're going with this, so we can, we can drive that.
And then I think even in black and white, if we saw what has it done to the fund balance in that assessment. And it gets more painful as you go along, but, but it's a time to look at it. And maybe that's one of those four options we talked about when we first had Tony.
So how would you like this presented then tomorrow night? Because we do have a report on it. Do you want to have us clean it up, or have Chris upponing up and just have the list of the things? And do you want to speak about them? Do you want me to read it off? How do you want to share the information with the public?
You want an action item tomorrow night?
Since we just made the list.
I think it needs to go, I think the community has to have an option to see it.
So come as a report, with what we, what we decided upon today as a report.
Yeah, we'd wait till the next week, the 20th.
So just, we'll just, if we can get this list, yeah, get this list cleaned up.
I would still, yeah, bring, I would still keep everything, but you could shift everything so that, but so that people see what we went through and what we discussed.
Or include the old list, include the old list, and then a new list.
And I think the goal still is 5% of balance, how we want to express that, and say, this was our...
How we express that?
We worked hard to get here, and hopefully we can go the rest of the journey, but, okay, well, there may be some people who are passionate about some of the things that we've cut. Now, we don't have the hot ticket items like music on there, and we know we'd get some folks if that information got out, but there, there may be something silent in there, if you will, but there may be a parent or two who wants to comment on some of the things that we went through pretty easily and cut, you know, we never know.
One thing that I noticed in sort of some of this journey is that we're spending over $17 million on healthcare and dental benefits. If I remember or understand correctly, it's around 17, it's a huge chunk of our budget.
Well, it's the 17 million, if I go back to the emails with Kathy, is because we're self-insured.
Right.
That money's set aside and we can't, when you look at big picture, whether we, whether we are, and George, you've been on the committee, so you can talk about this, I, this is before I came, but moving to that self-insured plan was to get away from the high rates of the premiums of places. So that process is, it's before I started, but now we actually save money by having that, but you have to have that 16, 17 million in the bank, because if I'm out with cancer and pretty quickly rack up a $5 million bucks, it comes from there. So is that kind of what you're talking about?
Well, that's what I'm just wondering if we, just more generally speaking, is there, is it time for us to maybe look at, are there other ways to do it so that we find some savings in that? Because that seems really high to me, but as far as the cost.
I think you'll find it isn't, we can. I think we're, we're too, it's not up this year, but the health benefits contractor is up the following year, so you certainly can look. And I would just encourage you, you know, I know Josiah sits in on those conversations and Todd is with insurance, Todd Kapsner and George, people have been on it to kind of share the process they've been through, and I think they feel pretty good about it, but, and we can look at anything.
Yeah, it's just a question, I'm not making a judgment of any kind of, it's a question.
Off and on, we've had a board member as a representative on that insurance committee. Hasn't always been the case, but that might be something you want to institute again so that there is a board member there so they can hear that stuff and then pass it on.
Don has to leave soon, so do you have us comment, Don?
I have a couple of things. The, the three categories dealing with music, the three phone calls I got interrupted here during the meeting, they, I'll use Stilwater Junior High as an example. Their band and their orchestra have performed at the White House and Washington DC and other areas. And the high school music program has produced professionals. And the parents said, if you take away that program or reduce that program, we're going to find someplace else to raise, send our students. So you're not going to save that kind of money because they're going to leave, because there are places that have, schools close by that have outstanding music programs. So I would urge you not to mess with that. And the other one I wanted to just talk briefly about, that I have a little question about, is the programming one, the dealing with the, the, remove the MS4, F4 full-time equivalent for house model. I don't know how you can come up with that number, because that, those are still teachers. And the, if you remove the house model, you're in effect then increasing the class size for a lot of students. Because the house includes a team taught, one team of five teachers who have one same planning period, and they teach English, math, science, social studies, and physical education. And they have the same planning period so they can deal with the individual needs of the students.